Okay, good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. It's time to call the meeting of Tuesday, May sixth, to order. Our first item is to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard today on items that are not on the agenda? Would anybody like to be heard today on items on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. And we have some employee recognitions today. Do we have that microphone?
I think he just checked it, I think.
Karen, is she here? Kevin, I don't think that's her. No? There it is now. Yes, yes. Good morning. So, we have here a certificate of appreciation presented in grateful recognition of twenty years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County as citizens. We want to thank you for your service. And I see Kevin is not here.
Oh, yeah, she's gone.
Are you accepting her?
I will accept her.
Tell her thank you to her. And she had twenty-five years of service, so congratulations. By the way, Kevin, the Highway Department also had twenty years, so. And Brian Bernstrom.
Well, there's Kevin.
There's Brian too.
Brian, Kevin?
Kevin, Kevin, come on up.
Oh, God.
You walked in the door. This is presented in grateful recognition for twenty years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County as citizens. Brian, you don't even look old enough to get this. Presented in grateful recognition of forty years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County as citizens. You are not old enough.
I think you're there.
Aren't you there? I'm just about there. That's quite a milestone. Okay, we'll move on then to the approval of the county board minutes from April fifteenth and the twenty-second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Approval of payments and vouchers, are they here?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Very good. Right on track here. Okay, we're going to have several groups talk to us this morning here. Social Service updates, and our first one is the Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council, and that's going to be Carol. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning. Just mentioning about you, that you're on track for me, so I keep you on your schedule. I'm Carol Lynn Sternad, and I am a member of the Local Advisory Council for Children's Mental Health.
And I am Melissa Markford. I am a community liaison at Prairie St. John's.
Good, welcome.
And a member of the Children's Local Advisory Council.
Well, welcome.
So, this is our annual report. As you may remember, May is our mental health month, and so it seems appropriate to do our report during this month. You should have received a packet of information regarding our activities and our work plan. The, and I will just quickly go through some of the items, and then I also have the survey information that we do annually that was not completed in time for your packet, so I will pass that out. But we have updated our LAC brochure, which is the green one, and that is used for recruitment purposes for our council. The white one, I believe, the Who Do You Call brochure, is, also has been updated as well, and that's a resource that we use for providers and families, and it just lists many of the, we try to capture as many of the children's mental health services that we have here within the county, and then some that are statewide as well. You have a updated list of our membership, and that will require some approval this morning. Just as a note to that, we're very pleased that this year we were able to have a consumer, a youth consumer, join our council, and his name should be on here. Yeah, Gage. So that would be our updated list. And then, our work plan for two thousand fourteen is basically the same. We go by what the requirements are for our council, which are set by the state. And mainly, the largest item, I guess I should say, or action within that work plan is the annual survey that we do, as well as the mental health awareness. And we did participate in the Kid Fest that was held on April twelfth. It was held in the Morehead Center Mall and sponsored by the mall, as well as the Clay County Early Childhood Initiative. Approximately four hundred some children went through that, along with their families, so it was a great opportunity for us to provide some information. And we got Carol Beckstrom to come back, and she volunteered to staff our booth, and we had some fun activities for kids to do for that as well. I did not include a copy of our operating bylaws, although we have made just a slight change to them, and I can certainly provide that to the council if you would like. The only change that we made within the bylaws themselves is just to, under Article three, we changed the timeline for our survey so that it fit more within the reporting that we need to do with the board here in May. So we'll be starting that in January rather than in February, so that we can interview as many families as possible with that. So I will pass out the information for that survey, and just go through it a little bit with you. We had a really great response this year to the survey. We had approximately fifty of them returned. We were closely with Head Start to get some information from the families who have some young children in our community, and the targeted case managers who work with our families also help in getting this information. We provide a five-dollar Hornbacher's gift card for those that will take the time to fill out the survey for us. So, this particular year, the ages for the survey seem to be pretty well-divided between the younger, as well as the middle-school age kind of, and then our high school and going into that transition. Six of the surveys noted that they had multiple children in their families with family with mental health needs. We were able to get some from the rural part of the county, as well as from Morehead. And as you can see, as we go down the list, when they were asked about how well the mental health needs in the community were being met, most of them said very well, and I think that's indicative of the fact that they have some case managers and that can kind of help them through that. And that's, I think, why we get a high score of them being aware of the mental health services and programs available. We do ask them every year how we can increase awareness of the mental health services and programs that we have available here in the county. As has been the case for the last several years, many of them indicate that getting information from teachers would be the most helpful, and that is an area where we have struggled just a little bit in trying to get information out. So, we will continue to work on that as well. The public health is actually public health and primary doctor, and so I think that more reflects the primary care settings than it does with public health. We have a nurse that's on our LAC, and I think they do a really good job of knowing what mental health services are out there, and if they don't, they contact someone to find out how they can help the families. So, I think it's maybe getting some more of these Who Do You Call brochures out to our primary healthcare doctors who are working with these families. It comes as no surprise, I'm sure to many of you, that there are some barriers in accessing children's mental health. And of the twenty that noted barriers, seventeen of them said transportation. And that is something that we continue to see every year. Families also shared that respite services are difficult to qualify for and receive, as well as some of the hours of services for some of those programs. This year, we asked a question to kind of dig a little bit further into that transportation issue, because we've brought this before the board for several years. And of those that responded to that question, most said that the barrier was public transportation or not having a vehicle. Many of them noted just even money for gas for their vehicles. So, we had one family that noted that they live in Fargo, but their children are in school in Barnesville, and so the services are in Fargo, and so the travel back and forth for that can be difficult. Some noted that they're just not able to use those buses for, to get to their appointments, and for many, they can't afford even the bus fees that are required to ride the bus. We then asked them some questions about the quality of some of the services. Most of them either felt that the services were adequate or did not need any improving. Many of the younger families were not aware of the programs that were available, and as they're just entering into the mental health kind of field with their kids, they may not necessarily need all of the programs available, and so it's not a surprise that they are not aware of some of those. But they did note, in a couple of them, that there are some areas of needing improvement, and that would be the respite programs, again, just having that availability. There was some notes for the referral system, as well as the wraparound. Inpatient services and outpatient services were noted. Inpatient services is a very difficult time for our families. It's a struggle when we have to have our children placed out of our home for care. And then, in-home services, there were a couple of comments regarding that service, that the hours do not work for working families. And then, we complete the survey by just asking some training needs that they might have, and so that will be something the council will then look at and develop within their next year's work plan on how we can address those areas of training needs. The remaining information on your sheet is some information that was gathered when we surveyed some of our providers in the community, and their gaps in services from their point of view is just that family, community, and school support for the LGBTQ youth. You will probably notice on our Who Do You Call brochure, that's not a new organization. It's been around for a couple of years, and it's been doing some really good work in supporting those youth. Financing, housing, transportation was also noted as a gap for families by the providers, and then just that awareness of services and the stigma that's related to seeking out those mental health services. And then, when asked about the most pressing needs of the families that they worked with, really about getting those basic needs met so that the children and the families can concentrate on getting those mental health needs taken care of as well. Housing and food, financial, the lack of supports, and the transportation, and overall, just that financial piece. Melissa and I attended a meeting yesterday for YIPA, the Youth Intervention.
I can't remember.
Program something. And they come in every year, and they do a meeting to talk about what they would, we would like to see as far as training. And overall, the consensus was that we needed some training in the mental health area. I know that Pat is going to be here later to talk to you a little bit about that regional mental health assessment that was done, so I won't spend a lot of time with that. But just to note that within that, some of the strengths that we have is the case management that we have here in the county, as well as some of the CTSS options. Barriers noted within that was transportation, and the waiting lists for the CTSS services. And then, just a special note, we are seeing more complex cases. As the survey pointed out, we've got families with multiple children with mental health, and some pretty significant mental health that's impacting all the way down even to the preschool age, and it's at risk for them to be, not be able to be at school or at daycare. And then, just the transition age of going from children, the children's services into adults.
Before you go on, who did you survey on this thing? People who are involved with the mental health?
We surveyed Head Start families, which, you know, are ages three to five mostly. And so, those families would be kind of entering into the mental health system with their kids, and then the remaining of the surveys were done with those families that receive mental health case management for their child.
I was just wondering, one who said that we're not serving them, communities not being met at all, not well at all. Did they respond? Why, or?
That would be out in, that particular comment came from the family from Yulin. Yulin is, our rural area is a challenge. I think it's something that warrants looking at the needs out there for some of those rural areas. Reach has been trying to do a really good job of getting some more mental health services in there, but it's just, I would say, the travel for services. There's not services located in schools or in proximity like it is in Morehead, so they may have to travel from Yulin all the way into Morehead, which can be quite time-consuming, particularly if you're working in Morehead and you have to go get your kids.
Good, second.
Carol, it seems like it's been a continual problem with transportation. I mean, that's every year that comes up. Do you have suggestions, things that we could do differently with transportation? What kind of recommendations do you bring with it? The problem is that, you know, we know the problem is there.
Yeah, we know the problem is there. It's been there for a long time. And I know that some of us met probably, what, about nine months ago? I mean, it's been almost a year since some of us met to kind of talk about that. You know, it's a really tough one. I was pleased to see that the bus system has started bussing into Delworth, which then will take care of North Morehead getting to the new Stanford Clinic, because my concern was those families living in North Morehead now have to go even farther for that. But in talking with Lori, she said they'll be able to get on the Delworth bus and get there a lot quicker. You know, we really, I've attended some of the planning meetings for transportation that the MetroCog has had. We really need to have a north-south bus route. And I asked the question to them, you know, how big does Morehead have to get before we can have that sort of thing? Because whenever we have to go into Morehead, or into Fargo, excuse me, and do that transfer, and possibly even transfer to a different bus tone south, you're just adding one more step to that. If we just had a bus that went north-south, I think that would probably alleviate a lot of them. It seems like their concern was, would they get enough ridership to make it feasible economically for them, which I totally understand that. But until we offer that and give families and individuals an opportunity to learn that bus system and use it, that ridership may be low to begin with. Many of the agencies are trying to offer bus tokens. Some of them, such as Solutions, offers even cab services for families. So I think agencies that are struggling with it are trying to find it out, but it's, I, and to add to that, if I may, I think sometimes it might not even be about the buses. It's about the fact that it's a mom who's trying to get four of her kids, because this is a children's specific survey. I think sometimes it's a matter of mom trying to get her four kids, maybe two or three of them who have a mental health issue going on, onto the bus, to behave on a bus for an extended period of time, and maybe having to transfer to a different bus with these four kids who are maybe having some behavior problems or other issues going on. And I think sometimes parents are thinking it is way easier to just skip the appointment, and then that leads to, that doesn't help anything either. So I think, maybe not, I mean, yes, the bus routes maybe should be looked at, but also some kind of, like, cab system where it would be, where these parents who have these multiple kids could utilize, and that would be the sole purpose of that specific.
Make sure each mother has four hands.
Right, exactly. Because she only has two hands.
Which ones do you let go?
Right, exactly, exactly.
Put the token in.
Right. Hey, how do you put the token in the machine when you're holding on to four kids?
Is there any opportunity for volunteer driver service, like we use for other areas for transportation purposes?
You know, I think that would be something that social services would have to look into, because I'm not sure how the liability would work for that. For younger children, we would need to look at car seats or booster seats for some of our younger kids.
Sure.
Yeah. But there are, you know, places that utilize that process. Those that have mental health case management, you know, have the ability for that case manager to help with some of that transportation pieces, and that works.
So, have you worked with Lori Van Beek, and those people with In Transit?
I just had a brief conversation with her about it at the governmental retreat in January, so it may be something that we just want to sit down and visit with her more.
So, Carol, is the problem where everybody has to do this exchange at the main station, is that what causes all the problems with the buses? You say, you say we need a north-south...
That would significantly cut down the amount of time, I feel, and I could be wrong in that, but I feel that would cut down in the amount of time that individuals have to ride the bus. So, when you have to go into Fargo and transfer, you're adding on time. It's not an added expense, because you can transfer for free.
Right, right.
But it adds on to the amount of time that it takes you to get to where you need to go. And, you know, sometime, you know, I would suspect that most of the time the buses are on time, but, you know, with our trains, they're off-time, and then we have situations where they could possibly miss their appointment because the buses were running late because of our trains, so.
Based on your need studies with these families, do you have, do you have an idea on a population count of people who you would think would use these services? And they wouldn't be using them every day either, would they?
I don't, but that is something that I, we could certainly try to capture, if you felt that information would be important. We could certainly go, you know, do a request to case managers as well as agencies.
I think that's kind of a, I think that in some, that's kind of a standard way to look at things in terms of knowing what your potential clientele is to be able to sell your case. I would think it would be, at least when you go to Lori or the Transit Authority, to look at a north-south route, you know, to, I mean, they do their own independent studies too. But certainly, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a bad idea for you to know the clientele that you're out to represent and to make sure that they get what you feel they need. You're going to have a better idea as to those numbers than anybody else's.
Sure, certainly. And we can, we can.
Sure, I think too that Grant's suggestion on the volunteer driver is something worth looking at. It certainly works, and where we do use it, works very well. And it may be people that would be willing to assist with that if we.
Unless there were kids.
The last thing that we have is the proclamation, so I don't know if you would like to take care of the membership list first before we move to the proclamation.
I would move that we approve the membership list for the Local Advisory Council.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I apologize for the change, but we do have a different proclamation that we would like to read and have approved versus the one that was in your packet. And the reason being is that after I sent the material out for your packet, I received this proclamation from the state. Twenty-five years ago- Twenty-five years ago, the Children's Mental Health Act was signed into law. Kevin's smiling. With that came some guidance in what counties needed to be able to provide in mental health services for children. And so this proclamation notes that, signing up that bill. This coming year then will be the 25th year that the Children's Local Advisory Council will be operating. And so when I mentioned this at the LAC meeting, the first question was, have you been there, Carolyn, for all 25 years? And I've not, only 17 of them. But it's very exciting that we have a parent now who was on when the council first was formed. And so we're really hoping to spend this next year to just do some recognition of the fact of the work that the council has done over the last 25 years. So you'll hear about that next May at that report. But I'm going to have Melissa just read the proclamation.
Just before you read the proclamation, I want to make sure that we got through that last vote. Did we, did we vote? All right, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't know if I got a chance to offer to the opposition to, which I, assuming there's not. Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Wonderful. So the Children's Mental Health Awareness Day proclamation. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to bringing, to building the health, resilience, and future of Minnesota. And whereas children and youth may have or be at risk of developing mental health conditions requiring therapeutic supports and clinical service. Whereas state and local agencies have partnered to implement the Minnesota Comprehensive Children's Mental Health Act for 25 years to create a mental health system that will more effectively and efficiently care for the mental health needs of children, youth, and families. Whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility. And whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts and actions toward how essential our children's positive mental health is to their development from birth. And whereas the Clay County Board of Commissioners in its policy and planning roles supports effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. Now therefore, we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 8, 2014, to be Children's Mental Health Awareness Day throughout Clay County, and urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on that day and observance of such exercise as, as will acquaint the people of Clay County with the fundamental necessity of nurturing the social and emotional well-being of children from birth and providing effective accessible services and supports for the children and youth with mental health needs and their families.
Move to approve the proclamation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Do you have an original one for to sign, or you're willing to sign this one?
If you will sign that one, I will.
All right, Carol. Thank you very much.
Just like a little copy of it, it's not signed. Can you give that to Kevin? No.
Oh, just for you.
I want you to have one, so.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
All right, next we have the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. Benjamin Eri Gray.
Yes.
Good morning, Benjamin.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Benjamin, are you going to start this? Or Pat?
Yes, I think, do we need to introduce my?
Sure, yeah, you can introduce your, your player.
I'm Jonathan Gilbert, I'm presently call chair.
John Salter, I'm secretary of the LAC.
And, let's see, where was I going to start? I apologize. So over the last year, we made a number of changes with the Adult Local Advisory Council. The first thing that we did was actually updated our mission statement for clarification purposes. And so we actually changed our mission statement to be more consistent with the statutes that we are currently bound by. And I believe we just clarified some language when it came to the education purposes of our, of our commission, of our council, I mean. Next thing we ended up doing is we had a number of speakers. If you look at the, we have a focus right now of really trying to figure out ways that we, ways that we can collaborate with other, not only do we want to advocate, but we also want to provide other organizations, we also want to provide information to individuals that are attending our local advisory council, especially organizations that can really assist a lot of the, the consumer members of our council. When it comes to the notable activities, we've spent a lot of time focused on continuing to provide a lot of information related to mental health, mental illness, and services for Clay County residents. One thing that we've, we've really looked at this year is figuring out ways that we can collaborate with Holly in some of the more outstate areas, including some booths, and providing some more information at Reach out in Holly, so. We did complete a survey, and we actually had 50 individuals that completed it, all consumers of mental health services. And so if you look at our recommendations, these recommendations are based off of our consumer results. Overall, the survey was, we had a lot of positives when it came to mental health services, especially the social connection. We had a significant improvement in the utilization and just the overall approval of the social connection. One barrier that we did see, the biggest barrier, was just some really mixed results when it came to interaction with law enforcement. And, and we did talk with Officer Swenson, and one barrier he discussed was they had approximately 40% of their officers trained in CIT. But due to a number of, a number of officers leaving the, the police department, they're now down to between 25 and 30%. And his goal, and, which is consistent with a lot of other law enforcements, would be getting approximately 50% of the law enforcement officers in Clay County trained in CIT. The big barrier there is just cost. It's going to take approximately $25,000 to $30,000 for individuals to get CIT trained. Another recommendation we have is we're still seeing a barrier in Clay County when it, when it comes to crisis beds. And what's happening on the provider side is a lot of individuals are being recommended to that level of care, but there's currently not that level of care provided. And so providers are kind of stuck with the discrepancy between the recommendations versus the services available in the community. Another thing that, that we're looking at is more just consumer choice, and we're finding some barriers when it comes to especially case management, individuals, just because of the waitlist and the lack of different service providers, is if an individual is dissatisfied with their services, especially case management, they really have limited options. And so figuring out how can we really find more alternative treatment options or alternative case management options, and looking at maybe some of the county funding or more collaboration among different agencies, and clarifying exactly what is a preferred provider for the county versus one that's under contract. If that makes sense? I know the housing, the Clay County Housing Authority is moving to an option where they are just, they're just creating a number of separate contracts for organizations, and then it's based off of the need or the consumer's preference versus a contract with a specific organization. And then the last way, the biggest, one of the biggest needs is we're seeing just a lack of prescribers in Clay County. Currently, the waitlist for psychiatry, if you're not an established client, is between three and six months. And so we're seeing a, a big barrier there where individuals are utilizing the ER or not taking care of their mental health. We're also seeing a discrepancy between what primary care physicians are willing to do versus what is, versus what is really needed when it comes to individuals that specialize in psychiatry. So figuring out a way that we can provide more psychiatrists to our community. Let's see, and then we have a member list. Any question, commissioners? Sorry, ran through that pretty quick.
Well, I guess I just, we need, you got a list of recommendations here, so each of those recommendations are things that you think will, will benefit the, the adult population.
Yes, yep.
Are they recommendations that you feel that the county commission can do something about, or is it?
Well, I think, yes, I think that especially the CIT training, I think if, if there could be some funds allocated. I know Officer Swenson is looking at some grant funding also, but the big barrier there is, you know, they have approximately $1,000, between $500 and $1,000 per officer in just in, the, through the Morehead Police Department, and they talk, explain that individuals in more rural, rural departments have even less than that. And so if you're spending $25,000 to $30,000, you know, you wipe out all of your, all of your training for that year and subsequent years. So what we were looking at is if there's some way that we could find some funding through the county on being able to assist the officers in providing that training.
Okay. We'll have to work with Pat and see what we can come up with on those.
Actually, our, 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 bus drivers, because they're always trying to fill shifts as far as empty time slots that they are going to try to fill. And one of the things that, one of the bus drivers has said was that if I didn't come in to do this route, people would be complaining, because there's a need for bus drivers here in the Fargo, for the Fargo-Morehead transit system.
Okay.
How about you, John? Do you have anything to?
Oh, I took her.
Well, it was just nice to see you here today. Thanks for, thank you all for coming.
Good proclamation, Mr. Ben.
Yeah, we have the proclamation, huh?
Yes, we have another proclamation, and this one actually is for mental health month in May, and I have two of them, one for the adult, one for the children, it's the same proclamation. So it's the commissioners, I know in the past we usually have the commissioners read it, but.
Okay, is that the same as what I have here?
Ah, it looks like this, yes, I believe it is. And if we could give your signature.
All right, so I will read this proclamation then. Unless one of you would like to read it.
I think I'll copy.
You want me to read it? All right. Okay, May is Mental Health Month, Clay County Proclamation. Whereas the mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges, protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burdens of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health, mental wellness, and support prevention efforts. Therefore, we, the Clay County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Mental Health Month in Clay County. As Commissioners of Clay County, we call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Clay County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. This adopted the sixth day of May 2014.
Also moved.
We have a motion and a second. For discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Great, okay, assign this.
And I think the last one will need our membership list approved.
Oh, okay, yes, thank you.
We'll go over the membership list.
We have a motion and a second to approve the membership list. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Period.
I guess two proclamations different.
They're the same ones, one was to give to the children's LEC and one's to give to the adult LEC.
Let's see if these have a spot on here for Brian to sign as well. Very good, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Social Connection.
I did not get my brochures into you, so I'm gonna have to hand them out again.
Yes, any introductions of your?
Yeah, my name is Deana Geisler, and I am the new executive director at the Social Connection since July.
My name is Mohammed Muzan, I am in Social Connection.
And my name is Allison Walbeck, I'm a member of the Social Connection Consumer, and I'm one of the activity directors.
And you've been here before.
Yes.
Good to see you back.
Okay, I'd like to give you a little summary of what's been going on at the Social Connection. I would best summarize this year's changes as opportunities for change. So give you a little history of what has happened since I've been at the Social Connection. Physically, we've rearranged our space, we've made it more usable for our members to access, we've downsized on some of the, the things that we've had at our club to make it really more able to be useful and attractive to our members. We have organized all our files, our, both our financial files and our member files, so that we can better document what is going on at the club. I've started contacting all our lifetime members, we've had over seven hundred lifetime members, and my hope is that within my first year that I've been able to contact all of them, to see if they're still at the location that we have, and to be able to encourage them to reengage with our services if they're able. And we have a new sign on the boulevard, so it's easier to find our location for people to come in and see us. We updated our mission statement, our new mission is to provide a safe, enriching, and supportive environment for adults with serious and persistent mental illness, and serious mental illness, who are learning to manage their life successfully in the community by building social relationships and providing educational and recreational opportunities both in our club and in the community. We've adopted some goals, and you'll see them on our new logo that's on there, which is, that, we have goals of improving mental health, building social friendships, encouraging recreation, enhancing member support, and instilling hope of our members. And so, we've designed these two brochures, one is geared at a members brochure, and the one with the green on the front is a donor brochure, and our hope is to increase donorship from our community members by using that. We've also got a website at thesocialconnection.org, and a Facebook page that we keep active. I'm the only full-time employee, we now have two part-time activity directors, we rely heavily on our volunteers to keep our doors open. I've started to present to different service organization and volunteer recruitment organizations and colleges to encourage more community volunteers, so I'm hoping within the next few months, we'll get some more community volunteers through the doors. Our activity directors have added a lot of inspiration and creativity to the club. My low-tech presentation here has slides to, pictures to share, but you'll see one of our former activity directors drew a mosaic on the wall of our, where our pool table is, and members have gone in and added their own fish and wild, or aquatic life, I guess, to, to the walls. We have very, a variety of crafts and arts that are going on, we've made stepping stones, we're making baskets, we're making soaps, lotions, and our hope is to eventually be able to sell those to the community at a craft fair, and to be able to see how people are taking these art projects, helping them work through their recovery, and to see the pride and joy of what they've created is just immeasurable to see that. Our board has updated our bylaws, so it most reflects our mission and provides better service to our members. We've also increased our board seats up to fourteen, so we're actively recruiting six new board members, if you know of anyone, refer them our way. We have over-doubled our attendance since, since July, on the average at that point, it was thirteen, and right now, our daily average during the weekdays is about thirty-five this last month. Our hope is to get by forty, up to forty average during the, by the end of the year of member visits. We have things to be come, we have installed our washer and dryer that has been sitting idle since we moved there, we have new TVs, we have four computers for members to use, and we've been able to resurface our pool table. We've also been partnering with Partnerships for Health and the University of Minnesota, we're creating, gonna be creating an edible garden, and Allison is also creating a flower garden area for us to help beautify our area. The Helping Hands at Good Shepherd helped update the courtyard area, so our hope is if we get some sunshine, that we'll be having some barbecues out there. We're also having a silent auction on May 22nd, and we're calling it a Day of Hope. It'll be from three to eight PM at the Social Connection, and we're gonna be inviting the community in to come tour the Social Connection, see what we are, what we have to offer, and then hopefully raise a few funds in the process. Our hope is to, this year, we, we are in need of raising thirty thousand dollars through various grants, and so our hope is that this is just the start of, of working towards that goal. We, as I had said, we've served over seven hundred members since our inception, we have about a hundred and eighty that have been active since July. Our members need to be eighteen or older, live in Clay County, and have a diagnosis of a serious and persistent mental illness, or serious mental illness, or, yeah, and our membership includes activities, we've been out in the community, we've gone on pontoon rides, we've gone to the zoo, we've gone to the circus, we've hoped to be going camping and fishing this summer, we've attended a lot of sporting events, and hopefully start rummage sailing soon. And then in the club, we do arts and crafts, we play cards, we have board games, we have meals, a lot of times, our members cook for each other, we have a food pantry there, and with Great Plains Food Bank, our members are able to take home food with them on a daily basis as available. We also get clothing donated from Repeat Boutique and Saint Francis, and various community members, so they can take clothing home for themselves, and along with being able to do two loads of laundry a day, that really helps people who are on a tight budget. We also celebrate our holidays on the holidays, a lot of our members do not have family or places to go to celebrate the holidays, and this undertaking is fully taken on by our member volunteers, and it's a great opportunity for them to be able to have a place to call home during those holidays. Our hopes for the future, we hope to start an art enrichment program, it's been really well-received in our, in our club to do art activities, there's additional space behind where we're located that we would eventually like to purchase. We also would like to have a classroom space to have some meditation and exercise, and have more in-class, classroom opportunities available for our club. We hope to reach out more to veterans and young Americans in our community. We also have a twelve-passenger van, and our hope is to eventually be able to have a part-time driver, so that we could have a rural route that goes out to our Yulin, Hitterdale, Holly community, to be able to bring more of our members in and do more outreach with that community, 'cause the transportation has been a huge issue for people. And our washer and dryer, of course, and stove are on their way out, so those are some of our wish lists, and we have many more listed on our website. Our goal is to be open three hundred and sixty-five days a week, and that all is, is needed to have additional volunteers or potentially different staff. But the best way to learn about our club is to hear from our members, and I have a few that weren't able to be here, that provided some, some statements that they would like me to read, and then we've got a couple here that would like to share some. So Colette writes that "My first impression of the place was, wow, these people, mentally ill people like me, could really do things. I saw them answering phones, cooking, playing games, crafting, and volunteering. It made me feel that I had valuable skills to contribute despite my mental illness. At the Social Connection, you can have symptoms and fail at things, and no one looks down at you, you just keep trying. Crying, having a bad hair day, being depressed, I can still go there and people will understand me. They are very understanding, even more so than my church or my family. It's the only place I have gone where having a mental illness is seen as okay." Beth said, "This place has brought life to my soul. I would be dead if it weren't for the Social Connection. I get from there what is not offered through treatment facilities. I have friends, social opportunities, and a chance to live a life." Julie shares that "Learning to live with mental illness is best done among friends. My mental illness is an invisible disease. I went to college, I had a few good jobs, I kept trying to find out how to be normal, until my life spiraled into a bigger and bigger tangle of pain and rejection and loss. I'm just like you, except perhaps I didn't, you didn't suffer the same childhood trauma that I did. Perhaps your genes don't carry the same codes that spell my particular sort of challenges. At any rate, my problems showed up long before they could be written off as laziness, poor skills, or bad character. I am not a loser. I used to think I was better than the people outside the center. Luckily, they didn't take it personally, and they welcomed me, and talked with me, and appreciated me. The old supports, family, friends, and even church family are no longer supportive when the attitudes are hurtful, and they're unwilling to learn with me. It's a lonely life being mentally ill. With the Social Connection, I am always welcome and understood. It gives my life providing, it gives my life providing support I cannot find anywhere else."
And then we have a few members here who'd like to share some information.
I am, my name is Mohammed Muzan, and first I want to ask to thank you for Mr. Ben, he's here, I think, because more than two years, he's worked with me about mental health, and he took me to Shosa Connection last December. The Shosa Connection, he saved my life, and I feel I have the family now, before I have bigger problems. And I have scare for everything, from the road, from the house, from everything. Now I have the family, and I, every day, from nine o'clock to five o'clock, I am there. I can't leave, when I leave, I feel I am not safe. And many program, the Deana she do there, and very nice for everybody, for mental health people, and mental health, they coming for everybody. But I hope the more service from Clay County for me, for other people there, and I tell you, thank you very much for everything for the service, for the Shosa Connection, to help Shosa Connection like me, like other people there. And thank you.
All right.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, I'm glad it's working out for you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, very good.
I have been a member of the Social Connection for about ten years now, and it has helped me through my recovery with mental illness, at a time where I didn't have relationships with, with my family. It has been there, it has evolved through the years, been through some rough patches, and is definitely improving, improving a great deal to the, and I have been improving, to the point where now I am working there. I did not expect that I would even get the job, I applied just for the heck of it, and got it. It is a place where people in all stages of their recovery journey is welcome, it's, it provides supportive people to just talk to, not even, doesn't even have to be about the activities, the outings, you know, the crafts, it's people to talk to, and they know what you're going through, and they're very supportive, and I think that is invaluable. I'm also in the State Advisory Council, and recently, where we're talking about the history of mental health in the state of Minnesota, and back in the days of Rudy Purpich, when they first developed a mental health council of the state, it was seen at that time that social and recreational opportunities for people with mental illness was essential, and it continues to be to this day, and so I'm very grateful that we have an establishment like the Social Connection.
And we want to thank you for your continued support, and invite you to come, May 22nd, we'll be open three to eight, to check out our silent auction, check out our site, and at any time, you can stop in. Wayne has often stopped in and visited us, and the members love seeing him come, and so we look forward to, to anyone stopping in and visit, and check us out.
John? Yeah, Deana, what, how long have you been at this location?
They've been here almost two years, I would believe.
Okay, 'cause I know we told the other location, yeah, the other two locations, I remember two different locations that we visited before, so, yeah, we, we need to come and see it.
Yeah, it would be really good, we've, we've made a huge amount of changes, I mean, and it's ongoing, they're constantly ongoing.
And see the flower garden in progress.
Yes, yes.
If it quit freezing it, mate, it would help, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
I hope the commissioner, the committee, to visit us there, and search Shosa Connection, and meet the people there, and you see that they're watch program there, believe me, I feel now I am safe. I have a different life now, very, very different life, because I am originally from Iraq, and I'm in United States now more than four years. And many program here to help me, and I save my life here, and I come back, I try, and everybody helped me here, and the Deana, and everybody, and Allison, she like my friend. And Mr. Ben, more than two years, he's worked with me, and he tried to make my mind back, and I am, I feel I am now a different life, and thank you very much, and I hope to, to come and to visit the Shosa Connection, and to see there the program, and help more to these people, because this is good for everybody, and God bless the United States.
You know, the, the people of Clay County certainly have to understand that mental health is, is a, is a major issue within our county and across the state, and across the nation for that matter. And we, we see the struggles in so many areas, and to have a, a place where, where you can go, and it's pretty exciting when you can hear, hear somebody say it's like a home to you, and it's, it's improving, and it's making your quality of life better. To me, that says the investment has paid off, and we're glad that you're doing well, we're glad you found the Social Connection to, to be there for you, and I think that other people that go there are glad you're there to, so that you can be there for them. So that's kind of a, it's kind of like a team-family deal, you got going, and it's, it's really remarkable. And we, we've seen this, for a number of years, we've had people come to the, the Social Connection, to me, is one that really, really shows how it can work to provide that assistance and that need for, for those with mental health issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. And we got the summary, right, the, the assessment needs?
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna go through that, Pat?
One more thing for you. I know some of you have already seen this, and I'll just go over it kind of briefly again. The directors in Region Four, which is the nine-county area in our area, including Clay County, worked with the Improve Group to put together a Region Four Mental Health Needs Assessment for both children and adults over this past year. The results just came out recently. Sometime in May, there's going to be an ITV that the Improve Group is going to put on, and Clay County will be one of those sites, so they'll talk about this in more detail. What you have in your packets is the summary of the whole Region Four Mental Health Needs Assessment, and then there's a one-page, two-sided summary of just Clay County. And a couple of things that I just wanted to bring up, and Carolyn talked about a couple of these also, is through this survey, you know, we, we did find, again, how much case management does really help people, and that is something that the county funds and supports, and, and so it's just nice to know that that is something we do support, and continues to provide people with something that they need. Another area is the arms services area. We now have four arms providers, and they are very busy, and serve a lot of people in Clay County, and that service continues to grow, and I'm glad we have it here, I think it really filled a gap that we were missing in services. Some of the things that we need to continue to work on are, of course, transportation, as Carolyn had talked about, and, yeah, we continue to talk about the need for transportation year after year, and I know Rhonda and I have been to the MetroCog MAT planning meetings to be a part of that. I, I do think it helps to go to those meetings, to tell them what the need is. I think more people need to go to them, to give them more detail on what, this is, this is the problem that I'm having with this particular bus route, but I do think that that would be very helpful. I think we maybe need to get together with some other agencies that also have transportation, and how can we work together? So like, the Social Connection has a van, and somebody else has a van, and somehow we need to, to connect those agencies so we can provide transportation to people that need that. I, I think there's a lot more folks that would go to the Social Connection if they had easy transportation, where they didn't have to change to different buses to get there, or if they may be coming from the out-county area. So, yeah, transportation is the issue, and, and it's connection to every mental health service need, so that will be something that we for sure need to continue to talk about and plan for.
It just seems like it's a, it's a theme that we see in every area, that, that seems to be a barrier, is this transportation.
Yeah, yeah.
We hear, we heard about it during our, our time, our manager's retreat issues, that transportation is, just seems to be a real barrier that we, you know, and I, I just don't know how, how, how we're talking about enough, or getting the right people together to... and I just don't know how we're talking enough or getting the right people together to... Are we gonna sit and talk about this for the next ten or twenty years, or are we gonna try to make a plan?
Right, right, yeah. And I think MAT has tried to, you know, improve, like getting the bus route out to Dilworth, that was a big improvement. We need bus routes that go out to the industrial park out in West Fargo for jobs. I mean, there's lots of different needs, but, yeah, we...
These people that ride these buses, they can certainly share them with other people, right? It's not like they have to have a bus exclusively for them, do they?
I guess I don't know for sure.
I know there are some instances in certain other social service areas where transportation becomes more of a one-on-one requirement depending on certain issues. But what we're talking about here, all these folks should be able to go on just regular transit and intermingle with anybody else who might be on a bus.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
That's what the hope would be.
Right, yeah. So there's gotta be, there's gotta be some options out there. But, you know, in part of crossing that big hurdle, like I said earlier, part of that responsibility falls on us to determine what clientele are we talking about that we're trying to get transportation for? Where are they? How many of them are they?
Right.
Because if we're ever gonna see anything done, we've gotta provide those details to the people who are mapping and doing all the work to do it. So we can sit here and scream all we want that the transportation is bad and what have you, but if we're not bringing anything to the table to help get it corrected, then that falls on us.
Yeah, yeah. And I will be sending this Mental Health Needs Assessment over to Lori Van Beek, too, so she can see that, yeah, transportation was identified in this also.
But, you know, so we've got the children's mental health issues, transportation, we've got the adult mental health transportation issues. We have other transportation issues in other areas of our social service programs. You know, we need to start mapping and figuring them all out. And I think if we can do that, we're gonna be able to make a stronger case for making changes in the transit system to better serve the people here on our side of the river.
Right, yeah. I think we also have a lot of case managers that transport clients, just because they don't have transportation, and, yeah.
But seeing those numbers all have to be reflected, you know, because all of a sudden, when you start putting those numbers together now, combined, they become a large quantity. And that large quantity, then, obviously, the more you have, the more you're gonna be able to say, you're gonna be able to see step on a bus, the more likely you're gonna have of being able to have that route you want. So, but it's gonna take some work, Batlin, I know you're up to the challenge.
Okay, so, the other thing, the other gap that got identified, supported employment. And we do have some supported employment in Clay County. What was identified is just that we need some more options. So we always want to see people employed. So do you guys have any questions? I would encourage you, if you are interested, to come to that ITV. Rhonda will be getting a date out fairly soon.
You'll send that to us?
Yeah, yeah. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just one comment. It was about a year ago that we did meet over at Social Services in regards to transportation issues, and we talked about a lot of these things. And I think one example that was given that day that we probably didn't address today is the anxiety of some children. If you have a child or two that you're taking for an appointment, and you have to end up going to West Fargo or to Fargo to change buses, and the anxiety that is created just in the wait time. I mean, we know when we had smaller children, we went to a restaurant, and if you had to wait twenty minutes, they were, you know, bouncing off the walls. Well, can you imagine if a child does have anxiety issues and things? And the same with the adults. So we started looking at what is available out there. You know, there's a lot of transportation servers, to include taxis, and what are the costs involved? And we really never did take that next step. I think there's been improvements made. But I think even just utilizing the resources and coordinating them better, just as you say, Mr. Chair, I think we could make some, if it gets the attention that it probably deserves, because I think the demand is out there. Like you said, we hear it all over, transportation. We're in a rural environment, and transportation is really our key to our lifeline.
And I don't think we can be afraid to tap into what Commissioner Everett said, too, because we have a couple of, we also have a couple of volunteer driver programs. And there's a lot of, we have a lot of volunteers in those areas, and I think there's a lot of times where a lot of them sit idle, you know. So I think when you put everything together and you take a look at potential north-south bus routes, as was suggested earlier, and then the ability to take advantage maybe of more, maybe we can co-mingle some of these volunteer drivers between different agency groups to make them available to either. Just, there's all sorts of options out there.
Yeah, need a transit coordinator.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, great.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Thank you.
All right, we will take a five-minute break. All right, we'll reconvene our meeting here. We'll move on to our, we are slightly ahead of schedule, but we're gonna just, I wonder...
Steve is here.
Yeah, Steve is. I think we're okay to go ahead with this. Steven Larson, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're gonna talk about the 2014 licensing inspection.
Yes.
And they apparently found a couple staffing issues.
They have issues.
It's really unusual for the Department of Labor.
Yeah.
Never heard that before.
We currently have three staff members on our overnight shift, Monday through Friday. And there's been a number of issues across the state and in other juvenile facilities that have kind of heightened, I think, the need for this issue, both with some sexual assaults, and also we've had some different issues where there's been mass suicide attempts in different facilities, and they're concerned with how our facility would deal with that, should those issues happen. With the fact that, of our three staff members on the overnight, we have one staff member that stays in our secure building, one that has to stay on John's floor, non-secure, and there's only one person that really can rover back and forth. So if there's an issue in non-secure, that staff member comes from secure down to help. But if there's an issue in insecure, there's technically not anybody that, it would be a one-on-one type situation. And while they've approved the staffing plan in the past, based on some of the issues that have happened, they've determined that they would like to see four people on the overnight. So we talked quite a bit about, from a staffing perspective, of what that looked like. And we feel confident that a roster position, being filled with a roster staff, and those shifts would be adequate there, so.
I have a question. You know, I don't understand for sure how your staffing works, anyway, but are there things for them to do when there's no issues?
There are. Our kids, the kids in our, in their rooms need to be checked every five to thirty minutes, depending on their issues, if they're mental health problems. There's different times where our kids are, you know, they don't sleep very well, and some of them are up at night, and our staff are having to deal with them.
Within fifteen minutes, too, if they're on suicide check, for example. Within thirty on the other kids, and some of the younger kids that they have to deal with, or kids with some mental health issues that the staff need to deal with. Continuously making wellness checks on all the other kids, too, with one staff, yeah. It tends to be a little...
Correct.
I think for once, the Department of Corrections is right on this issue. I think from a security standpoint, a safety issue, it's probably necessary. And at our last Advisory Board meeting, which is made up of commissioners from all our member counties, we had a lot of discussion about this issue, and everybody agreed that it was something that needed to be done. And I think Steve has addressed the issue of where the money is meant to come from, at least for the rest of this year, so I think it's something we have to do.
So the, can you explain this? So we're talking about using roster employees?
We're talking about, yeah, we would be talking about adding a 2,080 hours of roster staff to fill that position. During the week, we have three full-time overnight staff, and there are always, unless there's vacation, there's always sick, there's two full-time that are always on. One of them works the weekend, and they get a couple of days off during the week. But, so essentially, there'll be different times where there might be two roster staff working the overnight with the full-time, but, yes.
So have you worked with Darren and HR in terms of roster employees? Because we have this, we have this accumulative hour issue where we can't exceed, has that all worked out?
Yeah, we've been working closely with Darren and making sure that the number of staff, the number of hours that our staff have is below the benefit stage, so.
And so these budget dollar amounts that you're talking about, that's taken into consideration?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And the reason why Steve is before you today, you know, they don't normally come in to hire roster employees, but if it's within their budget limitations that you had approved earlier, but this is looking at some dollars, excess dollars and things, that wasn't approved in their personnel budget. That's why they're here today to ask permission to do this.
And that's the amount of that fifty-eight-hundred bucks?
Yes.
Yeah. Where are you gonna get that?
Well, the hope, I mean, our hope would be that our only way that we'd be able to get that would be come to you.
Well, you know what, we just wanted to let you start. Okay, so the, so to get this straight now, the, in our juvenile center, we have a, our secure, we share expenses with multi-counties.
Correct.
And then the non-secure becomes the responsibility of Clay County.
Correct.
And so what, again, tell me what portion of these funds would be charged to...
The portion of the funds that would be directly assessed to, or be requesting, would be that fifty-eight, fifty-eight oh seven is what we'd be looking for that's not budgeted for. The, this, and that would pertain to the non-secure program. The, as Grant mentioned, the secure payment or portion of that for the remainder of 2014 would become, come from our fund balance, the secure unit.
Well, what's the, so the secure portion is the ten?
Would be the ten, yes.
And that's been, that was approved by the Advisory Council?
Yes.
For the regional? And did we, back when that was done, did we have, what was the revenues over expenditures, forty, or...?
We had a rough estimate, or just about a final estimate, it was right around one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Because we still have our standing little agreement where Clay County would still get paid twenty-five percent back until our previous debt was met?
Correct.
Is that, was that still talked about and agreed to?
Yes, yep.
So Lori's gotta like that, okay?
So, this portion is five thousand that we need now, that's not, that's all ours. That's not shared with the other counties.
Correct, yes.
Well, I would move that we go ahead and fill the position as requested.
Second.
Motion, and second, and Mr. Administrator, where are you gonna find the money?
Well, Mr. Chair, and Steve, when we visited about this, he did talk about the payback that is coming back from the secure that goes into our general fund, coming from that function, the juvenile center. So we felt that would be maybe an appropriate place to apply that five thousand. I know it's being paid back to the general fund over a long-term loan, but also, and we'll be handing this out in a few minutes, the juvenile center did have revenues over expenses last year of two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So we feel confident that they will have the five thousand.
Well, you get it from somewhere, but I think you gotta work that out with Lori, too, to make sure that...
Actually, that money's not being paid back to the general fund. It was never given over from the general fund. It's just being taken from reserves. Basically took it from reserve from the juvenile fund, and then we're just keeping track of that as time goes, so the percentage is, you know, adjusted to other counties is less.
Right. But we talked about, I think you were on that meeting, but it's probably gonna be somewhere in the thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars for this year, which is...
Okay, well, we have a motion, and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same motion carried. Okay, so that's done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori, do you know if Glendon was gonna be here for...
I don't think so. I think I'll just...
All right, come on up, let's just do this then. Next on the agenda, we have the City of Glendon request to forgive penalty fee for parcel of Stockwood Business Park's second addition to facilitate Clay County Trailblazers purchase of property for their nonprofit group.
Yeah, Glendon does have a purchaser for the property, but there's three years of delinquent taxes on that. And the City of Glendon would like to ask the county to forgive just the penalty part portion of that, which they listed as twenty-four, fifty-four, thirty-six. I actually wanna change that to twenty-four, thirty-nine, thirty-six. Fifteen dollars of that is our fee, our publishing fee. And so that's just the penalty portion, and that would all go, almost all of it to the city anyway. Ninety-five percent would go directly to the city, so.
All right. And it meets, so the use that they're gonna do meets the requirements?
It hasn't forfeited yet.
Oh.
So they've actually got somebody to purchase the property.
Oh, okay, so it's, okay, all right.
I'll move to approve.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Next, we're gonna discuss the awarded Family Service Center elevator project. Do you have anybody coming to help you with this, or...?
No, well, yes, I do, and she's sitting alongside of me.
Okay.
I was instructed to say she.
You got the boss here.
She is, she is the boss, so, the buddy, so we're gonna, we're gonna call him back up, and if we have to reach over to our legal, we'll reach over there, too. So we're, let me first pass out this. We don't need to talk about this right now, I guess, but this is the summary that you had asked for in regards to our fund balances and revenues over expenditures for last year and things. But I think it does work into this equation. We, there was a memo within your packet referencing the elevator, and, not that I have to read through it, but the architect firm is recommending that we do accept the alternate for a deduct in the original bid of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, and that would bring the grand total down to three hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. And the reason why they are, well, maybe just, I'll back up just a little bit. Two weeks ago, when we met and we had the bid proposal open, we wanted to take a look at that. I've had a few discussions with the architect firm, Michael Burns and Associates, and what they have, you know, we wanted to talk about the fact that there was only one bid. Well, in fact, there was one general contractor bid, but there were three elevator companies that did submit their bid to the general contractor. But there was only one general contractor that wanted to engage, because we were concerned that this wasn't competitive. But I've been assured that they did receive three bids to the general, and the general took the lowest bid, and then submitted it with their general additions. And the architect have, they're making some recommendations here. They're saying that they feel that the hoist machines are relatively new, and that was kind of a shock. It says apparently replaced in nineteen ninety-four, twenty years old, doesn't sound like really new. But they said it's, the equipment is the same type used today as used back then. They said the equipment is in good condition due to continuous maintenance by the county, therefore requires refurbishing only. And this is on that, the alternate deduct that they were talking about. The time saving will substantially reduce by about eleven weeks, which is favorable benefit to the county. And then it talks about the new hoist machines are ordered and take sixteen to eighteen weeks to, for delivery, and the need for the crane is eliminated with that alternate. And lastly, if the project is rebid, we estimate an additional sixty-eight weeks. And then they talk about other factors on it, and they said that, and one of the factors that we talked about is that could the county be the general, rebid it, look at the three elevator companies that rebid it. And they said, well, then there's bonding and other liabilities, issues that come with it, that a general contractor holds. holds and then overseeing the operation when it's underway, so they said after analyzing that and having a discussion with, uh, our legal counsel, uh, their recommendation is that, uh, the county accept the bid, uh, with the alternates for three hundred and thirty-one thousand and five twenty-one, and frankly, I don't know enough about it to question my recommendation any further, so I guess I'm, I, I do feel that it, we need to move forward with something on it. I did ask the elevator company, or I should say George asked the elevator company for a record of the, uh, calls, and from, since, uh, August thirtieth of two thousand twelve, you know, that's about a year and three quarters, um, there are thirty-three service calls on the elevator, which seems like a lot to me, so I think we need to do something. What, and Lori and I have talked about how we're gonna finance it, because I know that's a question by this board always, and she is recommending that we do charge this to the Family Service Center, because we are looking at that being a enterprise operation where the rents and, I think we take in about a million dollars in rents a year. This year we will not have a debt payment, but we didn't budget two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we do think that they may be able to pay for this by the end of the year, and if they don't, we have a couple other sources, and, and, and future, or li, years up to now, since nineteen ninety-two, we've done a transfer from the general fund to cover any shortages, and we could do that. There's also, um, two hundred and one thousand dollars that'll be in the Fund Nineteen, which is a capital improvement fund. We look at this as a capital, a project, I mean, three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, um, and if your wishes were that we could use that two hundred thousand dollars, uh, towards that project, that would only leave a little over a hundred thousand, but we may be using some of those funds to finish up. I know we'll be using some of those funds, so I shouldn't say there's two hundred thousand that will be left in there, but there will be some dollars left in that, um, Fund Nineteen to help cover that as well.
I think this, where it's apparently replaced in sixteen, in, in ninety-four, I think it probably is relatively new compared to what we, I mean, my thought last time was that the elevators were, from the time it was built.
Yes, that's correct.
Or at least in, you know, well, yeah, evidently when we bought the building?
Yes.
We must've upgraded the, the elevators.
That, that part of it, yes.
So that certainly would be a lot newer than what, uh, we had previously done.
Yes, yes.
And have they said anything, how long is this expected to last then, once we do these, you know, is it, uh, did they give us any estimate, is it like for, is it twenty years we're good for then again?
Yeah.
Ten, or, they don't know, or? They won't commit?
Well, yeah, I guess I haven't asked that question specifically, but, uh, just currently, for example, we currently have a service contract with Otis, and our, um, monthly premium is sixteen hundred and some dollars, so that stretches to very close to twenty thousand dollars a year. The bid proposal does have a five-year service contract in it for five hundred and some dollars per month, so that in itself is quite a savings over going forward with the five-year contract. Uh, you know, that would be probably about sixty thousand dollars savings in service contracts in, in, uh, future years, let, you know, not even the, the breakdowns and the people that have been.
Something to, then we should start putting money away for the future for this too? We, we've never done that for the elevator, I presume, so.
No, we haven't.
Which is why we're.
You're, you're talking about creating an internal service fund to account for it.
We certainly could set, set something up.
Yeah.
You know, I'd purch, I'd prefer to purchase it out of the Family Service Center at this point, but in the future we could start putting money away for the replacement.
Yeah, I, I think it seems inevitable that at some time in the future it's gonna have problems again or need replacements.
Well, we have elevator here.
Here in this building as well.
Right. Could be one fund for elevators, maybe use it where we needed it.
It could, yeah.
Frank, any questions?
Well, I guess I discussed too with, uh, Brian on this thing, you know, the only thing I had looked at, you know, is the fact that forty thousand, I wanna look at all the stuff that they're saying that, uh, the hoist doesn't have replacing, we're gonna save eleven weeks and all this stuff, you know, whether forty thousand dollars is a, is that all that hoist was gonna cost us and stuff like that? You know, you're not gonna have to have the crane and stuff like that, and sometimes I wonder, you know, replacing the hoist, bringing the crane in here, you know, what it cost us forty thousand dollars, you know, and just, I don't know, did they look at that bit then, is that, uh, that was my only question on this bid, is.
Seems like it's not enough savings.
I, you know, I, I definitely think we have to move forward on it, and I'm supporting this thing that we move forward on it, you know, but I was just wondering whether the savings of forty thousand dollars, you know, not replacing the hoist, not bringing in the crane, that they look at.
That may cost us more in the future, not that far out then, and so. Maybe we're better off trying to find that forty thousand, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's only gonna cost us forty thousand dollars, but we should do it, you know.
Then it's basically all new then, right?
You know, but, uh, if we're only saving forty thousand, you know, it's just, and we got a twenty-year-old hoist in there, you know, and it's just, I'm not, not acquainted enough with this type of stuff to know what's, what's going on, but I just thought, you know, she's bringing in a crane here, you know, going through the roof and stuff like that, damage to the roof, uh, all that stuff, you know, I think we, we just, uh, I don't know, just seemed like it's not enough savings on it, but, but like I say, I still, I, I mean, I'm for moving ahead on this thing, you know.
Does anybody know what the life expectancy of the hoist, uh, mechanism is? I mean, is it, do we expect it to, in ten years are we gonna have to do it anyway, or is it, uh?
Yeah, sorry, I can't answer that, but, I, I mean, when they say it's in good, relatively good shape, twenty years old, you'd think it's got a pretty good life expectancy, but I think your concerns are very valid, uh, it, first of all, maybe the deduct is not enough for all of that work, and secondly, maybe it's wiser to repay, place it when you're going through all this trouble and having it down to, to do it.
See, I, I kind of agree with Frank that, uh, you know, it, it probably wouldn't have been in the bid to begin with, you know, if it weren't at least something to consider. I mean, they would've said right up front, you know, this, this doesn't need to be replaced and even considered for replacement, but that's not the way it started, so I guess I'm, I'm kinda there, if we can find additional money, that, that's maybe just do it while we're gonna do it, do it right, so.
Well, the other, the other question would be is, you know, how much would it cost to do that later?
I'd have to think a lot.
Does it, does it jump a lot more than the forty thousand?
Well, just a stage, some of these construction companies, just a stage, you know.
But that, but that would be a separate, a separate staging thing than the other work on the elevator anyway, wouldn't it?
Well, if you don't need a change.
Sure.
I, it seems to me that if they're, you know, it's, that it probably would be much more expensive just to separately come in and do it. Usually it's, like most of these projects, if, you know, if you're doing it, it's, it's part of the cost and it's, it's more cost-effective just to get it done at that time. They have to come back five years later and redo the whole thing, I'm guessing, and be looking at.
I would just say we get a warranty on the hoist too then, you know, and stuff like that, you know, it's just, uh, I don't know, it just seemed like the forty thousand dollars, I, I don't wanna toe, wrench into this thing, because we need to do this real bad.
George, did you have any, did you have any conversation with these guys in terms of the differences there and, no? Okay. Well, you know what, then it's, if, uh, if we're concerned about it, then there's questions being asked here today that maybe we should just wait another week and ask them and get back to us.
True.
I could say, I'm for it.
Because if we're gonna go with the new equipment, the extra forty thousand, we're gonna be adding several more weeks to it anyway, based on the ordering of it, so I, I think just clarification on, on, if we waited, what would it cost if we were, if we were to need to do that later? What would it jump from, would it jump from forty to eighty, would it jump from forty to fifty? What would that number be? So I, it seems to me that, um, we're not in, in a panic here, we have to make this decision today, and I think we could probably answer all of these questions by waiting one week and then make a better decision.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, I, the, I know the architects last, two weeks ago when, when, Mr. Burns was here, did not really know the inner workings of the elevator, and he admitted that, uh, would it be probably wise to maybe bring the, um, suggested successful bidder from the elevator company, ask if they could come to the board meeting, 'cause they would be able to answer some of these questions.
Whatever, whatever way we could get to the answer.
I think I'd be more comfortable with that too, if we had a conversation.
That'll give you a week to find that other forty thousand.
Do I understand that the, uh, the people we've had the contract with are not the ones that are, have got the, the bid, right?
That is, that is correct.
Maybe ask them if we've got this contract, can we find out from them what their recommendation is? They've been, wanna, working on it for the last, you know, checking it every month or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Everett, yes, that is a good suggestion. I have had conversation with Otis because I was, they are the ones that have been servicing it, and they are not the successful bidder, and I guess that's, I was wondering why they didn't even submit a bid, but then I learned that all three of them had submitted a bid, so it was a competitive bid and, and things, but, uh, I'm sure they would be willing to share.
They were still under contract with them, so it would be.
Yes, we do, yep, yes, we do, yeah.
All right, very good, bring this back, will you?
Thanks.
I certainly will, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Lori. Okay, you're on again.
Got a change order next, too.
Moving of change order number one for the motor vehicle remodeling project.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we promised to keep you, uh, guys well-informed of the project that was, if it was, as it was moving forward, and, um, you'll see that in front of you, you have a change order request for sixteen thousand, uh, fifty-five dollars. We did bring the twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty-six thousand to you, and that was the changing of the floor, which you did approve, and if you'll notice the other, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight items are relatively small, there's one for seventeen hundred dollars, uh, replacing the panic hardware on the doors, but, uh, there was a couple credits and then a couple additions for, uh, you see, changing some doors and some headers around and things like that, so, um, based on that, that brings us up current as of, of Thursday when I put this in the packet, but then I need to talk to you about one more as, uh, we approve this one. But I'd like to, if you, if you're so inclined to approve this, I'd like to see you, uh, approve the sixteen thousand fifty-five dollars, because if we keep it together, even though you already prior approved the twelve-four, uh, it makes it easier for auditing purposes when we.
But did you say that one more thing in addition to this?
Uh, yes.
What is it?
Well, um, on Friday, I'll go back a week, on Friday and Saturday last week, we moved them from the, um, moved motor vehicle and driver's license over to the, their new space, uh, and temporarily, 'cause then we'll be moving them back. Well, then they went in on Monday and they started demoing, and then on, um, I think I stopped over there Wednesday or Thursday, and they showed me the wall that, one of the walls that they weren't going to tear out, and it has black mold all along it, and it has some plumbing on the inside, which is kind of expected when you start demoing. So then on Friday, um, Ryan did send me, the architect sent me, sent me a, uh, a memo that says, KBG stripped the wallpaper at the existing men and women restroom at its southwest corner of the building and found that the sheet rock was damp and had black mold. I recommend that we remove the sheet rock from both restrooms, change walls and fixtures for the plumbing problem, and reinstall new water-resistant sheet rock. I did, I talked to Bruce Jaster and he was in agreement. Do you want me to give KBG a W to proceed with this change on a time and material basis, to not delay the project? So I told him to go ahead and start removing the stuff, and then he sent me another one that said that when they get the wall opened and things, then they'll come back, but they don't, uh, they don't think that this may exceed around the two thousand dollar mark. So, uh, I think we need to push forward on it, but there will be another change order coming soon.
So this change order, that, on this one can come later then?
Yes, yes, mhm, but I wanted you to make aware of it, that, that there is one in the works for, for that, but I'll tell you, the first part with, other than the change of the flooring, really, really went well, I think, I mean, it's, it's a few thousand dollars, but that's, for, for doing the concrete work that they did and the removal of the walls and things, it's gone really well, so, anyway.
What's the board's wishes here?
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Does, does the public en, entering now through the west?
West door.
And the sign, the road signs indicate where they're supposed to park and all that?
Yeah, it's a little tricky, but.
A little muddy too, but.
It gets a little muddy and, and we plastered signs all over and we're trying to direct them over, and I, I was out there again yesterday afternoon, and they said that it's working quite well, so, you know, this'll be this way for a couple months and. Yeah, if you haven't stopped out there, I'd encourage you to do so, I think they did a good job on the, on the first phase, and it's really gonna help when we get the second phase done, so, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. All right, we're running a little ahead of schedule here, um, our next item is the Adopt Sub, Adopt Subsurface Sewage Treatment Systems Ordinance, and this is Planning Director Tim Magnuson and our Chief Assistant County Attorney Jenny. Good morning.
Do we need to wait for?
This isn't a hearing, is it?
Hearing was, uh, was held, it was open and closed, so this is just a matter of, uh, coming back, discussing the issue that we had, and, uh, I guess I had something that I wanted to pass on. Uh, this is the email that I sent after our last go-around at the board here. There were some questions on, or major question was on language, uh, which at the time was thought to be new to the, the ordinance, and it's, it's not. The language being proposed relative to when a compliance, uh, inspection needs to be done is exactly the same language that we have in the ordinance now that's been in effect for about fifteen years. And that ordinance, or that, that language stipulates that, you know, the, uh, compliance agreement should be done prior to the signing of a purchase agreement. It's never been an issue in the past, um, it's not that we go out and police whether they do it or not, uh, it lets them know that it needs to be done early in the process, so, the, the language, um, is the same, uh, as what we've had in the past. I know that Jenny has been working on a couple of, uh, different possibilities, uh, we had, Chair Campbell had mentioned that he would like to see some other, other options available, and we talked about requiring it at closing, um, and possibly, I don't know what Jenny has found out from the recorder's office, but, uh, possibly doing it at the time that the deed actually transfers.
Now, my, Tim, my questions were as a result of the, uh, public input during, during the public, uh, process, uh, that's when I think it was Greg Anderson was here, kinda representing the opinion of realtors and how to.
Right, yeah.
Whether or not, you know, it was just.
Yeah, that's, uh, you know, we, we answered, uh, ninety-nine percent of Greg's questions.
Okay.
Uh, this, this was the one that he still had an issue with.
Mr. Chair, um, since the last meeting and, and Mr. Anderson's concern, um, I've spoken with Tim, I've spoken with, uh, Diane, the county recorder, um, and done some research as well, and I see there being three possibilities, um, number one, we could keep that section the same, um, and require that the certification be done prior to signing an agreement, that's the, the current, um, ordinance, and that's the proposed ordinance that, that Tim and, and Bruce brought to you last meeting. You know, the argument there is that it's been in effect fifteen-plus years, we haven't had any problems with it, um, if it's not broke, don't fix it, that, you know, that would be option one. Um, option two was something that was discussed, um, as a possibility, and that was to craft the ordinance to require that these sewer certificate or compliance certificate be required for the recording of the deed with the recorder's office, and that, I, I didn't know if that was a possibility legally or not, um, so between last meeting and now, I've kind of dug into that issue. I believe we can accomplish that, if that's the board's wish, uh, we have to just include that. We have to just include that in the ordinance. Once it's in the Clay County ordinance, it becomes a law of this county and the county recorder is then to abide by that. They wouldn't be able to accept a deed for register until that certificate accompanied it. I talked to Diane Streifel, county recorder, about kind of the practicalities of that. Once I determined that the legalities were, you know, we could accomplish that, I wanted to know practically what she thought about that and how that would work for the recorder's office. I somewhat compared it to, you know, when you filed it or when you record the deed, you have to have the well certificate. That's a state requirement. This would be very similar, except it would be just a county requirement. Her concerns were, her issues were a few when we talked about it. Number one, if we require that, it's going to be, it's going to require the person recording the document to pay an additional forty-six dollar recording fee for that document. So it would increase the cost for the citizen coming in to record the deed, forty-six additional dollars. Number two, we'd have to discuss how we handle just your, your basic quitclaim deeds, where it's not really a, a transfer, but sometimes people quitclaim into a trust or quitclaim between relatives, those kind of things. Would we have the same requirements for those kinds of transactions as we would for, you know, a full-blown purchase transaction? And then number three, she said she's really concerned about public education. If we do make this change, there's going to be many customers coming to the counter wanting to record something and they're going to have to be the bad guys turning them away, saying, "We can't record this until you have this certificate." So how would we do some education so that the word would get out that this has to be done and we would have less issues with that? So certainly she indicated the recorder's office is willing to comply with whatever the board decides, but she wanted those particular concerns noted. So that would be the second option. We could go with the ordinance, change it, require that for recording. The third one that Tim kind of touched on, that we just kind of came up as we were talking about it, one of those kind of happy ideas that just came up, was maybe a somewhat compromise in between and that would be to require the sewer compliance certificate rather than in the ordinance to say, prior to signing an agreement, maybe we, we just went with prior to closing. That leaves the recorder's office out of it. It's not a requirement to record the deed, but it's after the purchase agreement. So Mr. Anderson's concerns about, well, if I have to worry about this before I sign a purch, or before my client signs a purchase agreement, but the next realtor isn't following the law...
Right. Or doesn't know of the law.
Doesn't know of the law. You know, he felt that he'd be bound by something that maybe could prejudice him as a realtor. So maybe if we did it upon closing, it kind of leaves the, you know, it leaves the recorder's office out of it. It still maybe provides a protection to the buyer and the seller and it allows the county to become involved if that isn't done, but we're not necessarily policing it, you know, by requiring that it be done at the time of recording. So if that was the option that the board chose, that's just a simple word change in the ordinance. Rather than saying, "Prior to signing an agreement," we would just say, "Prior to closing" and, and leave it at that. So those are the three options that, you know, upon looking at it and speaking with the people involved, that I came up with for the board to consider and there might be something else if, if someone has another idea. Found out that Wadena County currently requires that the septic certificates be recorded with the deeds. Hubbard County also did require that for a time, but now they've repealed that. They didn't find that that worked for them, so...
Jenny, there's, and this maybe can coincide with this last scenario that you talked about because in almost all home sales today, in addition, you know, and obviously you get in the city and there's a lot of cities that don't have the septic issues, but in the rural, but almost no matter where you go and if there's going to be a, a mortgage tied to it, there does end up being, have to be a home inspection done. I mean, that's just become a standard. So it's not just your sewer system that's being inspected, it's the entire, the entire home is being inspected. And all of that part is done, I mean, the home inspection is listed, listed as a thing to do in the purchase agreement.
Right.
It, it, it states in there that it's something to be done, but of course, that has to be done and finished and accepted by both parties prior to the close.
Right.
So what you're talking about in this other instance about, you know, maybe having this taken care of and inspected prior to close would make, it would kind of coincide with the other inspections that, that needs, needs to be done on the house for other stuff. Wouldn't that make sense to kind of tie that all together?
It does, and I think each individual realtor can craft that into their purchase agreements and then they'd be in line with our ordinance as well.
Right.
At least it, it gets done before the buyer is finally obligated.
Oh, of course, yeah. And we need to have that for, for both parties.
Right.
Yeah. John?
Yeah, I, I, that makes sense to me. There's a number of things that you have to do before closing and this would just be another one of those things that have to be, so I, I think that's a good compromise.
That tends to be when they call and get kind of excited because they, they need to get an inspection also, so...
Does that, Tim, does that, does that sound good with you?
That would work. I think it's a great compromise. And like I said, it's still before the final obligation there and it does give them a little bit of an out, or at least a point of negotiation if the system fails, they, they still have the opportunity to negotiate with the seller as to how it's getting fixed.
This is, I've heard of lots of times when, when recording doesn't get done too, so this would make, they'd have to do it before closing. I mean, sometimes the recording just gets left, forgotten for months or something and...
Right, and we've, we've seen that in the mining office where somebody thinks that they own a piece of property and...
It's not recorded.
They, they bought it, but they, nobody ever recorded a deed for it.
So this would, this would cover that, it would be...
This, this should cover that.
Yeah.
Granted, do you have comments on this?
No, I think, I think it's a good compromise too. I think it would be workable, so...
Okay. Well, I, I, so, so we went through, we closed the hearing process now and so now we're in the final stages of, of what we need to adopt as our final policy on this, correct? So, so if we were to choose what we just talked about now, do you have to, do you have to go back and rewrite that for us or would we, would we be ready today to implement what we talked about?
I think that you could adopt it today with that change being made, that the requirement for certification be prior to close as opposed to prior to purchase. And that's just a matter of words that, that one.
Yeah, if that's the only concerns that the board had, you certainly could move forward on that today.
Well, it seems to me that was, that was the last major hurdle that we were hearing during the public hearing process, you know. We heard from the, from the folks who do the installation, how they like it. They want it, they want the inspections, want it done. And so the other side is those people who are trying to sell the properties on behalf of, of the homeowners and the concerns they have, and I think this just takes care of those concerns, so I think we should have all happy parties with it, with this process. So...
I'll make the motion with the change.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have two guests with us today. We brought the big guns just in case.
So on this issue?
Britten Sabel, who is the outgoing STS guru down in St. Paul.
Okay.
And the new donor, Ian Harrison, who's going to be our, our contact in the Detroit Banks Office of the PCA relative to SS.
Okay. And so you've heard what we've done today and you're all thumbs up?
Yes, very much, thank you much.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Our next item, and we are running a little bit ahead here. Darren, if you're ready.
I am.
Did we have, did he have, was he here on any particular, any... What, the levy? The levy thing?
Oh, okay, okay.
Mr. Chair, levies.
Okay, all right. We'll kind of try to keep that one on time then. All right, the Human Resources Director, and we have a couple of different things. The first one is changes to salary administration section of personnel policy.
Okay. Well, I just got out of the insurance committee meeting, so I'm kind of readjusting my brain here on salary administration, but thanks for having me today. What we're looking at is, we ran into a little bit of history on this, is our current process for reclassification and promotions, based on the comp study that we had, was that if a position was reclassified, that person would move to that next reclassified grade and then they would be put at a level higher than what they're making, but, but not the additional step. If, if a person was getting promoted, they would be put to the new grade at their same salary, but not less than, and then they would be given an extra step. And in the, in the comp study, what it says was, it gives that, that rationale for movement through the grid between a reclassification and a promotion, but what it also says in the comp study is that if a person is getting a promotion, they should have at least a five to ten percent increase in, in wages. So we had a situation in the social services department where we had two social workers that were promoted to supervisor, but when we did their calculations of putting them to their new grade and then giving them one step, that was only a four point five percent raise for them, depending on where they were on the grid. And so Rhonda brought it to my attention and we did some figuring and so the proposal would be to, if they do not meet that five percent increase for a promotion, then they would be given that extra step, not to exceed ten percent. So we looked at the numbers and the, the people that were going to only get a four point five percent increase when they were promoted to supervisor would then get an additional step, which would take them to about the eight percent threshold of an increase in their wages based on the grid. And because we have a grid, you, you have to put them on one step or another. You can't just kind of put them at that exact five percent because it normally doesn't work out to exactly five percent. So the, that was the recommendation that we took to the committee. We did have a couple of discussions on that and what came out of those discussions were what exactly constitutes a promotion. And we kind of had several discussions on that because in the Brooklyn study, comp study, the promotions and in the, and in the, the personnel policy as well, the definition of a promotion was anybody that moves from a lower grade to a higher grade. Well, that isn't necessarily a promotion, in other words. So we came up with the definition of what a promotion, what we think a promotion should be, and I put that in the language in, in your packet here, which is an, under Section Seven Salary Administration, on the second page, it says, "A definition of a promotion would be a movement to a position within their department which is of a higher rank, authority and responsibility and normally will direct the work of other employees." So if a promotion were to fall into that category, then we would do the movement to that appropriate grade and then look to see if they, if they get that one step and it meets the five percent criteria, then they would only get that one step increase. Or if it didn't meet that five percent criteria, then they would get an additional step, not to exceed ten percent. And our grid is set up so that it would never, I, I ran the percentages on each step, you know, how much percentage it is between each step and they would never, by giving them that second step, they would never hit that ten percent.
Correct.
Correct.
And that five to ten has been, was it recommended for promotion by, by our consultants to...
Yeah, correct. And, and that's why the, the comp study was a little bit conflicting in that regard because they, on one sentence, they say, "A promotion should be to the next higher grade plus one step." And then in another sentence, it says, "Promotion should be always five to ten percent." And it, it kind of eliminated each other. And it doesn't always happen and to tell you the truth, we don't have a lot of promotions. Social Services has probably the most going into social services supervisor positions, but we don't have a lot of promotions within the, within the county. So as you can see in reading through the proposed language that the, the PIC has also looked at and agreed to, I'd like to make that change under Section Seven of Salary Administration within the, within the policy.
So, yeah, so Darren, what we're here for today is we, we basically, through the PIC Committee, are asking for two separate changes, right?
Correct.
So we're looking for the changes to the salary administration section of the personnel policy and then we're dealing with the employment status definitions.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So how do you want us to proceed with the...
Well, I think we can maybe make a motion for each, each category because they are kind of separate categories.
Individual.
Individuals, yeah. The last thing on the salary administration was that we made, we did put the stipulation in there under, on page two, under five, "If more than one employee applies for a position, internal position, a competitive selection process must take place." So the department head just can't appoint someone.
And that, and that I hundred percent support that.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we do already.
Kind of takes favoritism out of, you know, of the equation here and it says, you know, basically saying anybody who's, who's qualified has the ability to apply.
To apply for that job, exactly.
As opposed to seeing somebody just appointed.
Right, and, and we kind of do that already. It's kind of the policy catching up to the practice right now. And the, the last thing on there, which would be a change, although we still try to do it now, is that whenever possible, internal movements would be at the start of a pay period. It's, it's kind of more difficult on payroll to pay them in one pay period for two different jobs that they may have been promoted to, so whenever possible, we try to make the, the move at the start of the period, so... So those are the changes within the salary administration portion of the personnel policy.
So would the board like to act on this before we move to the other one? Is that appropriate?
I'll move the changes as described.
And these, and this did come recommended by your PIC Committee too, by the way, so... So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried. Then we'll move on then to the changes to the employment status definitions.
Okay. The status definitions, we have in the personnel policy, what a full-time, part-time, what we call roster employees, temporaries, seasonal, and so this language kind of clings up that a little bit, makes it a little bit more defined in accordance with the, a lot of it has to do with the Affordable Care Act that is coming into play here, already is and next year more so for us. And so some of the things that we have discussed for this status definition, we also discussed a little bit on when we had the variable hour grid, when I brought that to the board and, but it was never really brought to the board as far as changing the definitions officially in the personnel policy. And so that's why I'm bringing it to the board today. Basically what it does is our regular full-time employees, that hasn't changed that much. Regular part-time employee hasn't changed that much, but we did go from being a roster employee to a variable hour employee and that is the terminology that the Affordable Care Act uses as far as variable hours and, and how we have to track that and whether they go over an average of thirty hours per year, average per week, you know, we would have to provide benefits and so on and so forth. So we figure, well, while we're doing these status definitions, we might as well make the change to a variable hour and then we have a variable hour grid, so it all kind of flows now. And so we changed that to variable hour. Our short-term temporary employee, how we had it right now is kind of the seasonal, the temporary and the roster was all kind of categorized as one, one category. And so what we've done is broken that out into three... is broken that out into three separate categories, and our short-term employees, short-term temporary employees are employees that we can hire full-time for a maximum of ninety days. A lot of, Social Services does a lot of that, and that also reflects back on the Affordable Care Act, whereas after that ninetieth day of a full-time employee, we would have to start providing benefits to that employee. So what we wanted to do was specify a start and end date for our short-term temporary, not to exceed ninety days. And then we still have to kinda take this back to the Insurance Committee and the pick on, you know, probably looking at it a little bit closer on the Affordable Care Act of how we wanna do that. If what we have is a short-term temporary person, the department head calls us up and says, "Well, my project isn't done, I need this person for another month," then technically we would have to provide that month of benefits for that, because they would've gone over the ninety days of full-time employment. So we still have a few bugs to work out, but we think that the short-term temporary employee definition that we have here mirrors what the Affordable Care Act is looking for as well, plus it kinda identifies people that we can hire for ninety days, and then, you know, to do a project or whatever, and then they're gone after that. And then the last thing is the seasonal employee, we just kinda cleaned up that language a little bit, and basically stating that those would be our six-month employees for seasonal purposes, whether it be snow plowing or anything like that. So that's the changes that we would like to make in Section Three of the personnel policy.
And again, those, all of these changes were discussed quite heavily at our Personnel Services Committee, and it was agreed upon by the full committee to move these forward for approval.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of those definitions under Section Three.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I got one question on the short-term employees. I know sometimes in my previous employment, I noticed that was eighty-nine days instead of ninety, is there a thing if we do work them the whole ninety days?
Well, this is more for the Affordable Care Act, there's different categories for para, union, all these other things, so we have to really start tracking how they're working, how many days they're working, what categories they're falling under. If you try to make one policy to fit all of those, you probably have a mess of a policy.
You can't do it.
And so that's why we're kinda saying ninety days is...
Well, I was just wondering if the ninety days, once you're on the ninety a day, whether that qualifies you, or that should be eighty-nine days. I'm just going by my previous employment, some experience of that.
I can't remember what the eighty-nine...
If it fits, you checked it out and it fits, I'm gonna, I'm okay with it, you know, but there's something, if you work that ninety a day, that you...
I think on the Affordable Care Act, I think the ninety-day number here is the key.
Is the key, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we had a motion, did we have a second? Okay, any further discussion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same motion carried. Memo of understanding to building maintenance employees.
Okay, as you know, the Building Maintenance Union, they decertified back in March, on March fifth, actually, and during those last bit of negotiations, their contract ran out last year in December, and then we were in negotiations, and then they decided to decertify. Part of that negotiations was, they were requesting some on-call pay for their, for employees that have to be, come in, enter on-call for an entire week, usually once per month. And as of right now, we never paid them for on-call pay duty. So we kinda thought that that was a little bit unfair, because we are expecting them to be around and be on-call, carry a radio or a phone, and come in if something happens for that week, and I think they were running it Thursday to Thursday or something like that, and we're talking for the maintenance techs, basically. And so we started our negotiations with a hundred dollars per week for being, having to be in on-call status for those four building maintenance technicians. And so what ended up happening is, once they decertified, we brought this to the pit committee and said, you know, "This is probably more of a fairness issue, that if we're expecting somebody to be on-call for a week at a time every month, they should probably be compensated for that." And so what this memo does is, we also met with the building maintenance people, and they were, they were fine with this, we did, like I said, bring it back to the pick, and so what we're requesting here is to extend that one hundred dollar per week offer for their on-call pay, they would be responsible for notifying us with a schedule of who we'd be paying every week, and then if somebody has to flip-flop or whatever, they would work that out internally. But then also extending the hundred and fifty dollar per year reimbursement for their, most of that's gonna go towards safety shoes, which we think is important for those guys to have. This does not include the custodians or anything like that, this is mostly the guys that are working with heavy machinery, heavy equipment, that type of thing, so we would extend that hundred and fifty dollar per year reimbursement for their safety clothing, safety boots, that type of thing. And then also, if an employee is called back for their on-call, they would be guaranteed at least two hours of pay at time and a half, which would've put them over their forty-hour norm a week anyway, if they were to stay the additional two hours. So we thought that all of those was probably, and the hundred and fifty dollar a year reimbursement and the callback was in their original contract already, so this isn't something new that we're giving them, we're just kind of extending those things for them based on what their contract says. The only thing that's actually new that wasn't in the contract is the hundred dollar a week on-call pay.
The only time this last C item would be used is if they're called back, but it is less than two hours. If it's more than two hours, then it's just one and a half times paid.
Correct, correct. If they're here for four hours, they would be paid four hours.
Yeah.
If they're here for a half an hour, they would, they get paid.
Well, again, this is one of those deals, it seems to me that if we're asking an employee to sit at home and sit around the house twenty-four seven, and ultimately probably not even being able to partake in other things that families might be doing because they're on-call, it certainly is appropriate that they should have some sort of compensation for that, and I think this is a, I think this is a good compromise to do that.
Well, this is gonna cost us about five thousand dollars a week.
Yeah, about a hundred dollars a week, fifty-two hundred dollars. That would be an additional...
If we're talking four employees, huh?
Yes.
Well, it'd be one employee a week.
Correct, yeah, one employee per week, so fifty-two...
So it's one hundred dollars per week total.
Right, that's four hundred a month times twelve, so forty-eight hundred.
It's actually fifty-two hundred.
Fifty-two hundred.
Fifty-two weeks.
Fifty-two weeks.
No, costs us around five, no, costs us around five thousand dollars.
That's right.
I'll move to approve.
Alright, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same motion carried. Okay, we have, it was, our engineer should be here if we're gonna appoint him, huh?
Do I get to?
Oh, you have more?
No, I was just gonna comment on the next agenda item, but...
Oh, for David Overgo?
Yeah.
Okay, well, hang around.
I will. I was just gonna give him leave, but he's not here, so.
That is why.
He's not as late.
Alright, well, let's take a couple minutes, because we gotta, we don't wanna get ahead of schedule here for this other deal, so five minutes, we're back. Alright, we'll reconvene our meeting here, we are now five minutes behind. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we were gonna take our time on this one, because we had an awful lot to talk about, but we're gonna cut it short here. But the next appointment is to reappoint our county engineer, Dave Overgo, if we so choose, and that, we're gonna have our county administrator give us reasons why we should reappoint.
Can you come up with any reason?
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
That's pretty rotten, as far as I'm aware.
Did you bring a list of other potential candidates?
Well, I want, you folks may wanna say a comment here too, at least two of you are on the Highway Tracking Committee, but Dave has been a terribly strong asset for Clay County. He was appointed first in two thousand and five, and then he's been appointed to two four-year terms, two thousand and six and two thousand and ten, so he's served as your county engineer now already for nine years, and I've been here now for a little over three and a half years and worked with Dave on a lot of different things, the Barnesville Fire and the Bonding Bill, and the issues with the township officers and different roads, and the project in Holly last summer, I mean, you can really go on and on and on, I think we've just had a terrible, successful season here, and I would just, without any hesitation and lunch, recommend, recommend that you reappoint Mr. Dave Overgo to your highway engineer position.
Any comments?
Well, I guess I'd have to say, the other time I worked with Dave, I've gotten immediate response on concerns from the county, I mean, from the township meetings I've been going to, and I come up with several questions already, and it's always been such an immediate response from Dave and his staff, and I think he does do a great job.
I've had the same experience with Dave, you know, whether it's the Heartland Trail or any issue that comes up, he's always more than willing to take care of the issue and to be as helpful to anybody who needs the help with whatever project we're working on, so I agree with Frank, no hesitation whatsoever.
Yeah, me too, Dave's been very responsive to all of our, my constituents' requests, and when they've talked to me and I've talked to him, it's, something is done immediately, and that's been very, very helpful. You know, we gotta think of something that's negative, and I, you know, we have...
Well, let me rain on this parade.
You wanna do that? You got your speech ready?
Well, let Derek, Derek's back now, so I know you got it.
I'll trust that you'll handle it, and, okay, I would strongly recommend that we reappoint.
Well, Dave, this goes, this goes back to, and I believe I was on the search committee and interview committee when we, when the county first decided to appoint you for engineer, and you were a little green, and we had our reservations about if it was right, but you've kinda proven over time, I wish we could work a little bit more with these trains in town here, so that... I need, I don't need to go into too much more as to why you're tardy sometimes. It couldn't be all perfect, you know, it's just, it couldn't be all perfect. But, you know, your work, and I work with you on the Highway Tracking Committee, and how well you do, and give a lot of credit to Nathan too, and your staff, is to really monitor your equipment, and to know when you see a good deal that's good for the county. I'm talking about for the different times when we've went through and made those major investments on road graders, well, there was significant savings to people this county, based on that research and what was done there, and you played an important role in recommending that, so that's a, that's a strong point for you. Your ability to, during our flooding times, your ability to really get out there and do what you can to coordinate, whether it's with Saban, or whether it's with something on the Buffalo, or whether it's something on the Red, with the City of Moorhead, you and your staff are always there. And I guess, I was trying to find something else wrong, but anyway, I just, we wanna thank, I wanna thank you for your good work, and I like the way that you're, you're holding some of these good staff meetings with all your people, and I don't hear any negativity coming out of there anymore, and I think that's really nice.
The work with the townships has been really good.
Yeah, and the work with the townships, and, you know, being able to bring them good, sound numbers to, you know, giving them facts as to why we have to charge what we have to charge for road maintenance and all those things, and that just doesn't happen, that requires work to do that, and I've enjoyed working with you on that stuff as well, so...
But I'll make a motion to reappoint David Overgo, county engineer.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Ryan, last chance.
Well, just one more comment, he was so helpful with all the projects that we've had on campus, too, the parking lot things, he, they took them over, they've never done that before, they took over and supervised those projects, just been excellent cooperator. And that's one thing about him, Dave, you can talk to him about anything, he just doesn't shrug you off, and might be a little late once in a while, but he does get back to you on everything that you ask of him, and that's really good, that's really important, customer service is really important to us.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, congratulations, you got a job for another four years. Okay, you got some, one more issue here too, huh, Dave?
Yep, the last issue is our annual dust control quotes. We changed this over a few years ago from being kinda the, not only the sponsor, but kinda the funding agency on it, we would kinda upfront this. This is the exact same process we've had, I think this is at least the third year, where we get the solicitations of the landowners, we turn that over to the low bidder on the dust control, they put together a map, and then give that back to us, and then we kind of help facilitate it a little bit. Did everybody get the bid quotes in the packet? Normally we get a couple of other providers, this year we've only got one from Tri-City Paving, and I think it just went up a few pennies, so I guess I would recommend that we go with Tri-City Paving for the dollar and twelve cents per gallon on the dust control.
I've got one question, Dave. What, is the magnesium chloride and calcium chloride, does it accomplish the same thing? Do we...
They're almost identical, most, back in the day, we almost always had mag chloride, where I would ask other adjacent counties, and a lot of them were using calcium chloride, and the only, the main difference is just the application rate, they pretty much do exactly the same thing, but I guess I feel, I think calcium chloride probably does work a little better, but you can debate that either way, but they're pretty much, they do the exact same thing. I think we've had calcium the last couple of years.
So you're not concerned about not getting a bid on the magnesium?
Nope, correct.
Just so I understand this, on dust control, it's just what it says it is, I mean, on a project, they control that there's as much dust into it.
It's kinda this salt-faced brine that gets put down from a truck with a big spreader bar, and it just sprays it down, and then throughout the summer, then that material pulls moisture out of the air and keeps the ground, or the gravel, I guess, kind of a darker brown, keeps the dust down, so in the middle of July, when it's hot and you get no rain, it's not as effective as it is when you get a little bit of moisture on it, but that's essentially what it does, it pulls moisture out of the air.
You usually like to apply it after it's rained, don't you?
Exactly, it's nice, you know, ideally, contractor in town that didn't bid Glacier Enterprises, he pre-wets it when he does it. It costs a lot more money, but that's ideally the way to do it, is come ahead of your deal there, so yeah, if you can put it down with a little moisture down there, it is a lot more effective, it lasts a little longer. I think the, another ideal thing would be is to put it down twice a year, depending on what kinda road you live on, but if there's any type of traffic at all, it'd be great to put it down twice a year, but we've never done that, and, you know, we're probably lucky to get the amount of customers that we do get, but they really like it, and, you know, the county itself has got, and that's what the contract I've got, so I've actually maybe got two motions there, one, we award the low quote to Tri-City Paving, and then we do also have our county contract for the amount that the county pays for of the project.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, that was, we combined them, is that okay?
That'd be fine, I guess.
Yeah, we can combine them. Okay, so that takes care of that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And Dave, it's, we did have a Highway Tracking Schedule for this morning, and we wanted to check with you two if that would be possible, right after the Commissioner's Day over at Veterans, or not? Does your schedule allow that?
After, you mean after?
Yeah.
Oh, after the...
After Commissioner's Day, yes.
What kinda timing are we looking at, like a...
Um, I've got four items on there, we could go as, we could, half hour, I could get it done in a half an hour.
Alright, so let's try like a twelve forty-five.
Twelve forty-five?
Is that okay?
That'll work.
Works for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number 12, clarification of Clay County's position regarding Oxbow levees. And Jenny's going to talk to us on that.
Good morning again.
Jenny, good morning.
Yeah, I'm here to talk about the diversion authority and some of the issues that we're seeing in that respect. Of course, it's, you know, very complicated, but just, you know, as limited to this issue. There's been some controversy lately regarding the Oxbow, Hickson, Bakie levee in connection with the diversion project. And, you know, the diversion project, we are working with the Army Corps of Engineers, whereas the levee project for Oxbow, Hickson, Bakie was done through the North Dakota Legislature, funded by the legislature. And so, you know, seeing them as two separate projects is how we've always preceded the diversion authority. In conjunction with the diversion project, Minnesota law requires that an environmental impact study be done before there can be construction in Minnesota. So of course, that process has been undertaken. And in doing that, the Minnesota DNR had some concerns about the Oxbow, Hickson, Bakie levee project in that no construction work on the project is supposed to start before the environmental impact study is completed by the Minnesota DNR. The DNR was concerned that the Oxbow levee project was a part of the diversion project and therefore there was some violation of the law in that that was being undertaken before the environmental impact study had been completed. So there's been a lot of discussion with the Minnesota DNR through the diversion authority, the individual members of the authority. You know, and Clay County being a member of the Limited Joint Powers Agreement, we've been involved and in meeting with those entities. In speaking with John Shockley, who is the city attorney for Moorhead, in many conversations that we've had, he raised the idea of putting a letter out to the Minnesota DNR, kind of just summarizing the Minnesota entity's position as to these issues. Making sure that we, we put it out there what our position is. And also reaching out to the DNR, you know, hoping to establish a cooperative relationship so that if there are concerns in the future, that, that we be brought into the discussion. So Mr. Shockley has drafted a letter from the Minnesota entities. He forwarded it to me to bring to this board's attention and to determine whether we wanted to sign on that. Moorhead will sign this letter as well as Mr. Shockley. And Ms. Norgard, who is the attorney for the Buffalo Red River watershed, is bringing this to their board meeting next week. So they will decide on their participation in this letter. But if you've reviewed the letter, I mean, it's not anything controversial in the respect that, it just states our position and we don't believe there's been any violation of Minnesota law. First of all, you know, as the diversion authority's response indicated, we consider the two projects to be separate and distinct. The Minnesota entities are not involved in the Oxbow, Hickson, Bakie levee or providing any funding. There's no Minnesota funding tied to this project. This was through the North Dakota Legislature that provided the funding. And so we just wanted to reiterate those two facts as well as, again, indicating our wish to work cooperatively with the Minnesota DNR in any way that we can going forward. And, and we've gotten some good feedback that the Minnesota DNR's concerns are addressed and that they don't believe Minnesota entities are at risk of violating the Minnesota law. So I don't think there's anything groundbreaking in the letter. We just wanted to outstand, or reach out and let the DNR know what our position is. And hopefully, this, you know, this will not be an issue going forward. But I, I would like the board to consider signing on this letter. I would advise that it in no way affects any, any interest or liability that we may have.
I'd like to comment, you know, this can, you know, could get two-way street on something like this too. For example, if we were to, on the Minnesota side and we were having the Minnesota Legislature being involved and wanting to have some flood protection measures done for your community down south there, Comstock. And, and let's just, if the tables were turned and the Minnesota Legislature had, had passed resolution like North Dakota did to protect the community of Comstock. And even though we would, we'd want to plan that in accordance with an overall project of the diversion authority because it was, it's still within the footprint of that project. I don't think we would want North Dakota standing in our way either and saying, no, you can't do this. You know, especially if there's been, you know, so, so if you look at it from that standpoint as well, you know, I serve as a voting member on the diversion authority. And I simply said that, that this is a North Dakota, this is a North Dakota deal for you guys. This is your money. We're not putting money into this from the Minnesota side on that project. But I do remember making the comment, but, you know, if the shoe's on the other foot and Minnesota wants to do something, then we would want North Dakota's support for what we're going to do as well. And that's kind of how I left my, my comments during that. And I think they were kind of shared by the other Minnesota rep, which is Nancy Otto. So I, you know, in terms of, and I, I've read John's letter and I agree. I, I just, I don't think we've, the Minnesota entities have done anything wrong.
Well, I, I have no argument with the idea that there's benefit for, for Hickson, Oxbow and Bakie apart from the diversion. I mean, they knew, they will benefit from flood protection. Although they certainly don't need a 17-foot deck for even a 500-year event without the diversion. I do have, I think it's a stretch of the imagination to say that this project, that Fargo would be benevolent or the legislature would do this if it wasn't for Fargo's diversion project. I think, I, I can't accept that that's a logical conclusion, that Fargo and Bismarck are just being benevolent. And they're going to, they're going to come and choose one community that they're going to protect when there's hundreds of communities up and down that also need, need protection from floods. So if this letter implies that, that, that we, that we, we see that this is something completely separate, I think I have a hard time with that. I do agree that it's, there's benefit. They need flood protection apart from the diversion, but they don't need to the extent that's being developed. So I still have some thing, problems with this. And also, you know, their plan also was for protection for Comstock and Wolverton, which they were going to be doing following the Hickson, Bakie and Oxbow plan. And we don't, you know, our argument here seems to me would say that, that we would, we would not separate those communities from the project. And yet we are separating Hickson and Oxbow and Bakie from the project. I mean, are we just to say that Minnesota or city of Moorhead or Clay County would come out and, and choose to protect Comstock from, from flooding even, even without the diversion?
Well, it's certainly.
It's just not going to happen.
Certainly, well, certainly, it's certainly possible. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it would be the city of Moorhead. I would say that the, the county of Clay and the state of Minnesota would, would be part of it. Just like, just like, actually, the city of Fargo isn't so much involved even with the ring levee of Oxbow, Hickson, Bakie. What it is, it's the state legislature and the Cass County Commission and the Southeast Regional Water Board, whatever. Those, those are the ones. So, so even when, when you're looking at the Oxbow, Hickson, Bakie deal, it's not, that isn't even Fargo's deal pushing component to do that. That is the Cass County Commission and the state of North Dakota through the, through legislation. And I would hope that if, if we had the opportunities to do for, for Comstock or any other community, and we, we've been and we've lent a helping hand and whether it's Georgetown or whatever as a county to promote and to help, get the assistance from the state to do flood projects, we would want to do that for Comstock as well.
Well, and I'd suggest we, we plan to do that even if there's no diversion.
And I think that would be a wonderful idea and I would fully support it.
And Commissioner Evert, I think it's paragraph five that addresses the issue that you have some reservation about. And I think, you know, the way it's worded, I believe, supports what you're saying in that there is benefit to those areas irrespective of the diversion. And that even without the diversion project, those levees would have independent purpose. When you're talking about the height and so forth, the specifications, you know, we're not making a comment on that. So I'm hoping that is worded such that, you know, it would make you comfortable. I, I think that the main purpose of this letter is to reinforce the fact that we don't believe the Minnesota entities are in any way in violation of the DNR regulations. Because we are, you know, we, we are not contributing any funding to that project and we are not participating in the construction of that project. And that's done fully through North Dakota. And whether, you know, we, we here in Minnesota believe that the specifications are correct might be a different issue.
So your recommendation is to?
My recommendation is for Clay County to be a signatory on this letter.
No move. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, my, my other question would be that I, I don't believe in reading this that there's any way in which we're, we're making any even a suggestion as to which way the DNR should, should act in their study.
No, we're not.
And, you know, I want that to be clear because the, if they, if they're act, if they choose to act against the, the project, I don't want us to have a position that says that we disagreed with that, so.
Certainly, yeah, no, that's an independent review. I think, I think really the only thing that would, that would go towards that and would be, we would just like them to know that we are here as a cooperative partner. If they have questions, if they have concerns, if they have any facts that they need clarified, we are always willing to participate in that process. But their review is fully independent.
Good, thank you.
Right. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Agacy, Agacy Recreational Trail Board Directors, Brian Berg is back again.
She knows I'm so excited.
See what happens when you get a week back.
Good morning, again, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. What you have before you is a letter that comes from the Agacy Recreational Trail Administrator. Two weeks ago, you had a presentation from the chair of the, of the trails and then a commissioner from Norman County and then also Gordy Goodvagen was here as well. And they were explaining kind of their financial situation. And they said a letter or a formal request would be followed. Well, I guess what you have before you today is a, a request from the Agacy Recreational Trails that they are requesting $10,000 from each of the three counties in which the trails is located in. And the, they kind of explained the reason for the shortfalls and things. I guess we have different opinions sometimes on, on where they're at with it and, and should this be given. But all I'm doing to you right now, I guess, is bringing it before the board for its consideration. And Commissioner Gross and I have had discussions, we've had discussions with Jenny's, we've talked about some strategies and maybe he would like to, Commissioner Gross would like to speak to what we think we should do with this.
Well, I guess I do. I mean, since I'm on the board there, it's, this board is operating with funds that probably have been assigned to some other bill that they have. They don't know whether that bill's going to come through, it's in litigation or not. So they're operating funds. So according to the joint powers, they can't use those funds even, you know? So they're really operating with funds they don't even have. And I think until we really look at this joint powers agreement, which Jenny is reviewing right now, I mean, I think we have to make a decision whether we want to be part of this or not. You know, continue to be part of this or not. You know, at this time, I think, until we review this joint powers agreement, see how we all fit into this, the ownership of this thing, right now, I would recommend holding off on this a little bit until we get that review done. Even though I know they need the money to operate, you know?
Yeah, well, I guess I may, may disagree and I, you know, you're, you're on the board, so you know better than, than we do. But, but it seems to me this is, this is to pay for things that have already been obligated. And since we are owners of it, we have an obligation to pay our bills. And it seems to me that, that we, you know, I think beyond this $10,000, when we're looking, they've, they've got to find other ways to support themselves. And, and I don't understand why they're not getting in on the legacy funds and the things that other, other trails are in on. So they need to be looking at that. But I, I think we, if, if the other counties are willing to put it in, we, we should too and get ourselves even. And then you start deciding what, if we're going to drop it or what.
That may come to that, you know? But I'm still saying we should figure out this joint powers agreement. You know, how we fit into the whole thing, you know? The legacy fund money, that, I asked that same question, you know, why aren't we getting some funds? Well, that is for state trails. And we talked to the DNR and they, they're saying, even though you're not a state trail, you're a regional trail and we sort of consider you a state trail. However, you don't qualify for the funds. So there's no funds that we can get there yet. So that, that's sort of out right now, you know? And it's just, I mean, I agree with you, we have to pay the bills. And they are paying the bills from this, I don't even know what to call these funds, assigned funds or whatever you want to call them, you know? And it's just. I don't know. I, I agree, we have to, we have to decide as a county, the Ichy County, do we want to operate this thing separately by county, by county? Do we want to be into this entity or not?
Well, the.
Where would the $10,000 come from, Brian? That's always the magical question, yeah.
You have to cover reserves, I presume, but.
You know, the interesting thing, when they were here this last time, they kept on saying, we need to, we need to put a halt to this. We heard them saying it themselves, we need to put the halt to this till we can get a plan. And I'm not sure if all of the $10,000 from each of us was to cover prior, but if it was, was there still, was that going to still pay for some more legal? We've got all that legal stuff that's going on that's just going to, this could just turn into just a, a.
I know.
A money-sucking project here that, because you got, you got every landowner out there now contesting whether or not the, the thing should be on their property and they're, they're altering the, the, the trail. We heard it, we heard it, talked about it.
Yeah, my question too, at the last meeting that we had, was, you know, why do we keep on hiring legal authorities when we, if we own the trail, we've got our own county, county attorneys, you know? So it's just, I'm not quite sure yet in our.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to fixing the problem, but I, you know, I think, Frank, if you're saying we should hold off and, and get some more data, then I'm.
I think the bills need to be paid eventually, you know? I'm not ready to say we should do it now.
Yes, that's what I always think, we should, you know, this is something we need to take care of. But I think we should make it clear if we do this, that we want this thing resolved before we're going to commit any more money to it, that this is.
That's my.
You know, don't send another letter for another $10,000 until we, you know, know of it, you know? So, but I think at this point, I think we're.
Make sure we just don't think we can bail without paying the bills.
Oh, no, no, that's not my point. I just like this joint review, the, the review done by Jenny, she's working on it. And we discussed that at the meeting here last week. And I think we need to do the review and see what our commitment as a county is, you know? Are we better off staying into this joint powers agreement? Are we better off going by ourselves and taking care of our own five miles? and taking care of our own five miles, you know, and then...
I don't know that we each have our own designated hours.
That's not an option.
Well, right now it's not, not under joint powers, excuse me.
So, for today, can we just have a motion to table this? Because it is a formal request.
I'll move to table this request.
And when we table, we table to a designated time typically. When would you like to have it?
Well, I guess I'd have to go with Jenny to see what she thinks.
Do you need two weeks or...
Frank, when is the next Trail Board...
June 2nd.
So, I would ask that we table this till after June 2nd.
Yeah.
How many, June 3rd or June 10th?
About June 10th.
June 10th.
How about June 10th? Would that be okay?
Your motion to table till June 10th?
Second, the motion.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Okay. Item number 14.
Mr. Chair, please. Totally, totally. And Mr. Gross is probably going to report on this during his reports. But the three of us did meet and Jenny is drafting a letter for Commissioner Gross to take to that board that, but it'll meet, you know, with his approval of what he wants to discuss. So, and one of the points was discussing our membership there and what is the best for all three of the counties and look at alternatives. So, we are making progress on that. We have met, so. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Sounds good.
Great.
Okay. Communication, okay. Designation of Clay County Heartland Trail Task Force and appointment of members.
Okay. Well, we did discuss this a little bit, I think, a few weeks ago. And at our Heartland Trail meeting on the 15th of April, I think it was, we met with MetroCog and people from the DNR and Clay County and Moorhead and Dilworth, Glendon, Holly and Sibbette County people and Mindot. And we all agreed that, you know, we're, with MetroCog's help and the DNR, we're hopeful we're going to get some bonding money here to move ahead with the planning and design phases of this Heartland Trail, at least as far as it goes through Clay County. And everybody was in agreement that we should have some official recognition for our task force by the Clay County Board. And so, that's what's before us today to recognize this group of people that are going to be participating and trying to move the trail forward in terms of planning and design for the future, so.
Would this be a, would we be appointing these members or just affirming that this board is in place?
Just affirming that...
Okay, I would still...
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Committee reports. Frank, are you ready to give your committee reports?
Yeah. First, I was back in April 24th, rural, there was an ITV on the Rural Caucus. They were talking about the transportation funding, you know, they're looking at 100, there's $100 million earmarked for it, you know. But according to Dan Larson, I mean, we need over probably $282 million over the next 10 years or something. So, right now they don't think there's going to be enough money in there. They like to earmark a little bit more money for that. One thing he did mention, as far as levy limits, it doesn't look like they will enforce levy limits this year. Still working on accreditation of assessors. Still trying to get some information from counties as far as whether we should move ahead with that and what's good for it, what's bad for it. So, I guess they're asking all the counties to submit stuff if we've got some sort of desire to say, go for it or not go for it, so. Other things about the trails, as far as trails, Minnesota is hosting some meetings on the statewide system. I guess there was one in Ferguson, May 1st. I don't know if that was really was announced or any not. But there's also another one in Bemidji on Thursday, I think, May 7th. Oh, that's tomorrow. Let's see. And they were talking about that trails, parks and trails that the legacy fund does have a good amount in it. Probably will be for that Heartland Trail, may come through for that. May 23rd, I went to the Dilworth, no, not Dilworth, Glendon, Glendon City Council meeting. Looked to me like they had some good things going out there. They've got a developer, wants to develop around 30 homes there in the south side of Glendon. So, that would be a good thing for Glendon, you know. And other things discussed was the wellhead protection program. Family health care, pretty much Patricia Patrone will be here last month, next month, or this month, there's a last month there, you know. Other than that, it's the routine business of taking care of stuff there. Agassiz Recreation Trails, yeah, we discussed about that 100,000, $10,000 that we may ask from each county, you know. So, that was pretty much the big item to be discussed there. And one other thing, as I mentioned before, our representation in Clay County has resigned and we need to find a new representative to be on that board. Let's see, another one I went to was the Red River Regional Dispatch Center that John and I were at there in Glendon. There were several cities had a concern about how they're being assessed for operating that. I hope we come to, we didn't change anything on it, you know, and I hope there's an understanding as far as how they're going to operate. We're going to continue operating that way. Went to the Georgetown City Council meeting last night and their only really concern was the wheelie stacks, how they can benefit from and stuff like that, whether it continues for one year to the next if they don't use it one year, you know. That was my meetings.
Very good.
Great. And we're having committee reports, but the transportation issues that Frank was referring to, I think yesterday, the Capital Investment Committee came out with their recommendations and it's much better than, you know, what the governor had originally proposed. And according to MRCC, the Rural Counties Caucus, the recommendation now is, I think, $35 million for local road improvement projects plus an additional $5 million in bonding money for those. And then I think there's $55 million for bridge replacement, a lot of which is bonding money and some cash. But it's, I think originally there was $10 million proposed by the governor for everything. And so, it's, hopefully these will move forward and we'll see some positive results for transportation issues in greater Minnesota, so.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, I wanted to comment about the Regional Dispatch meeting that we had in Glendon. It was with the four cities that have law enforcement departments and the, how we spread 62,000, I think, of costs to them. And actually, three of the cities said, you know, no real concerns at all. One city is feeling that they shouldn't be charged for it, it should be something we provide. And it was pointed out that we do provide 100% of the 911 calls or costs, but that 71% of the calls that come to dispatch are not emergency calls. They're calls for, I want to talk to the police chief or there's a dog running across my yard or, you know, various things like that, 71%. So, we feel that those are calls that these local departments would have to have somebody answering if dispatch didn't do it. And therefore, there should be some cost to them for that. Those cities that, where there's, you know, for instance, Yulin doesn't have, doesn't have a police department. We contracted with them to do that, so there's no charge to them because it's part of our responsibility. So, it was a good discussion and I think, you know, Brian was very firm that if there was no positive alternative funding ideas, then we will continue the way we've been doing it. And I think that was, that was fair. The next day, the 24th, Brian and David Overbow and I attended the meeting over in West Fargo, the Cascani Highway Department with the Secretary of Transportation and North Dakota Senators and Governor and so on, about safety primarily. But we did have a chance, Barb had set up for us, Barb Rody from Washington did set up for us a meeting with some of the staff, not with the Transportation Secretary himself, but with other staff to talk about our project to hole 52. And I think they heard us. I think they will bring it to the table and maybe, maybe we'll get some positive action there. Last, on the 25th, there was the annual meeting for the Lakes and Prairies Community Action and it was a good meeting. But one of the, one of the things we continue to talk about is the ongoing discussion with West Central Community Action for possible ways in which we can work together and possibly even merging the organizations down the road. And that discussion is ongoing and very positive, I think. I had a meeting for Lakeland Mental Health last, on Monday, the 28th. And the employee recognition, it was the one, once a year, they recognize the employees for the length of service and so on. So, that was, that was always interesting. Also, the one thing that I noticed that day, that Mac was absent. So, I should take note that Mac didn't attend that meeting. So, we should, you see him, you can find out where he's at. He was probably vacationing someplace. But anyway, it's always fun to see him there, but he was missing that time. So, there's, that day we also had a campaign committee meeting for the Heritage Society. And SWAP meeting last May 1st was very interesting. We went to perm and toured the facility, facility there and really gave me a much better understanding what we're talking about with this burner. I didn't realize the amount of separation of garbage that occurred before it goes into the incinerator. And also, we're able to see the controls for the incinerator and how they, how they really from remotely controlled temperature, everything about the incinerator, which is very, very interesting. But they do separate out aluminum, tin and cardboard from the flow. And the large items that they can't incinerate and can't recycle, they do landfill those things, big items like furniture and appliances or whatever might come through. But that was interesting. And we did, then later discussed last Friday, we had a meeting and Kevin probably wants to talk about that with, that we are going to be recommending agreement with them. Let me see. That was all. Thank you.
Okay. On Thursday, May 1st, I had a Clay County Joint Powers meeting and that was a conflict with the solid waste. So, I chose the one. I knew you were going to do the other one. And we had presentations and the whole theme of that meeting was rethinking mental health again. Again, was another big meeting discussing mental health. And we had Pat Boyer, I think, and Rhonda Porter were there. And then also Jill Scarborough from the More Olympic Schools, Pat Boyer. And it was just looking at, they were kind of reporting about what their needs are and that, you know, you kind of hear some of these same things that there just isn't enough of the professional people around, let me hear it this morning here, that can help handle with all of these issues that the kids in our community are going through. So, that'll be a work in process. We did have a solid waste meeting Friday afternoon. And we're going to be, the board's going to be getting a deal here where we are going to be recommending to join in as a partner in the, what's the name, Brian, of the...
The Prairie Lakes.
Prairie Lakes. And we're going to...
Municipal Solid Waste.
Yeah, municipal solid. And we're going to be in there at a 15% member, which is right for our size of our county and our amount of waste that we would be sending. We have a kind of a two or three tiered approach in terms of the waste that would go there and then what would come back to our landfill. And the whole process in this is to save the life of our landfill and reduce the expensive cost of constantly having to expand that landfill. Because that does get extremely important. And the fact of the matter is, is the state of Minnesota and MPC in particular really likes to see counties working together on regional issues. And I think hopefully we'll enthusiastically support that move. It would be good for us. We did get also a report that it looks like there's maybe the possibility, rather than a new transfer station someplace in Clay County, that we might be able to work with the city of Moorhead and altering the transfer stations that's there to meet our needs for transporting these products. So, that's kind of an exciting piece of news that we heard. Those were the only meetings that I had. And Brian, it's down to you right here.
Okay, I'll try and make it real quick, Mr. Chair.
Yes, make it real quick.
Okay. We talked about the Department of Motor Vehicle. We talked about the dispatch meeting. We talked about the being invited over to Cass County. We met with the Secretary, the Administrator of Transportation, which was very nice. We had administrators meeting, regional administrators meeting in Detroit Lake last Friday. Then we moved motor vehicle. We dealt with some personnel issues. We met with Enterprise again on some car issues. Commissioner Gross and myself, Dave Overbow, Nancy Gunderson was out there. We represented the county at Ken Parks' retirement of 34 years. So, we were there. Carolyn Drew was up from Ellis and Lori and I met with her real quick in the afternoon. She had called the Joint Powers meeting with mental health issue. At Management Team this week, or last week, Thursday, we had a presentation with Jane Henninger, reference MCIT. That was about an hour presentation, I think was very, very helpful. In fact, as a result of it, we are going to submit a claims reference, the elevators. And I didn't mention it earlier. I don't high out a lot of hope, but we may, possibility of getting some reimbursement reference those elevators. Because if a breakdown causes other damages, something like that, then the insurance may cover it. So, we'll be looking into that pretty seriously here. Met with Dave and Nathan, reference the parking lot up at DMV. We're making good strides in that. We met with MetroCog. Tim and Dave and Nathan and I met with MetroCog in reference to Clay's work plan, Clay County's work plan, the different things that are going on within there. We had a diversion advisory meeting last Friday. We had a solid waste meeting last Friday and Kirk will be bringing that next Tuesday. And then also, the last item on here, Kirk had sent me a memo in reference to Cleanup Week in Barnesville. And they have one coming up in Holly and they had an extremely busy one in Moorhead here last Saturday. And just for example, in the, in the city of Moorhead here, we had about 360 folks drop off material at the electronic drop off. In Barnesville, they had 165 people show up for the electronics drop off, 23,000 pounds of material. We had about 50 folks drop off material at the hazardous waste facility in paints and different things. And one farmer was in that had picked up like 20 pieces out in the ditches and he was very appreciative that the county was open and took care of that. That helps everybody when they come in and do that. So, he just wanted the, all their employee recognized for a job well done during, and Mr. Chair, thank you.
I do have one more thing here. We did have a Oakport Joint Powers Board meeting that I did not get a chance to report on. And we did have one Commissioner's Use Permit for a structure that we approved. And then there was a lot of discussion regarding the city code amendment discussion on how the codes will look in that area of Oakport that's going to be annexed and the annexation update. And so, we're plugging away hard to make sure that the rural character of that area, that those, all the residents out there, including myself who lives out there, will be maintained and protected within the city. And the good news is, is the city is, has been very, very open to that. So, I think we're going to make major strides in making that annexation be a little bit more smooth.
Got one more item.
Yeah.
May 23rd.
Um, May 20th meeting, May 27th meeting, I hope you guys are going to be here, because I'm going to be gone, and Wayne's gone, so, um, hope those two meetings, we can get a quorum out there. Okay. All right. We're adjourned.